All right, let me call to order the Monday, March 5th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Ms. G, can you take the roll?
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Krasner?
Here.
Mr. Puentez?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Wodisco?
Here.
Thank you.
Back on push buttons.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. The first item is going to be the speaker series, and we're going to be hearing from Rich Dooley.
Mr. Chairman, just like to welcome Rich Dooley, who was a colleague of mine in Arlington, so I'm very fortunate to be able to stand in for Mr. Stoddard tonight, which reminded me, he started a month before I retired.
Two ships passing in the night.
Yes, November of 2005. But he was a very talented guy. I knew he'd go far, and he certainly has. So, very pleased that his expertise is working in Arlington, is able to familiarize us with this important program, which has been adopted in the county, which we hope could be possibly adopted here in the city. Rich?
Excellent. Put this on, very good. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight, as well as to the rest of the Planning Commission members. Also, a thanks to Mr. Snyder, Mr. Stoddard, Kate Walker, and to Commissioner Stevens for reaching out and helping to coordinate this. Once again, I'm Rich Dooley. I have a presentation here. I'll make it through the presentation, but you can feel free, as we go along, if you want to just raise your hand and ask questions along the way. We can do it that way, unless you want to keep it to the end. It's your meeting, so however you want to run that is fine by me, either way.
It doesn't matter to me. I'll let you take the lead, your presentation.
Okay.
I get those strong parts either way.
Okay. So, tonight's objectives, as I was mapping out this presentation, was number one, to talk about commercial property assessed clean energy financing in general. And then Arlington is the first jurisdiction in the Commonwealth to set up a commercial PACE program. So, we'll go through, and I'll talk about how that is structured, and then answer any questions that you have about the program itself, or about PACE in general. So, there are my credentials. Community Energy Coordinator, I'm part of the Rethink Energy team over in Arlington in the Department of Environmental Services. We're about eight people strong, and we are the point group in implementing our community energy plan, which I'll talk about a little bit more in a moment. I'm also the Commercial PACE Program Manager. Scott Dickey sends his regrets. He is sick, and so he would like to be here. He would normally help present with this, but he is our program administrator for our PACE program. He is with Sustainable Real Estate Solutions, also known as SRS. What they do is do a number of things. In addition to being the program administrator for Arlington's program, they also are working together with numerous jurisdictions around the Commonwealth to help them set up their PACE programs. We've been out to Loudoun County, presented at a commission meeting out there. He's been in touch with the folks in Fairfax, Charlottesville, just came back from Lynchburg, and so, traveling the Commonwealth to support PACE programs around the Commonwealth. Also collaborating with a variety of stakeholders throughout our community in helping them understand PACE and what it all entails. And then also, you see there in the last bullet, they are, this is not their first rodeo when it comes to PACE. They're in eight other states, or eight states total around the country. The third one there is Connecticut. That is one of the most active commercial PACE state, commercial PACE activity states around the country. And so, they've been in existence for quite a while, and have a lot of projects that have been through the pipeline ever since it started up. And they are the program administrator there. So, if you remember back in 2009, there was ARA funding, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. A lot of jurisdictions around the country that were interested in PACE and had heard about PACE on the residential side, had started endeavoring to develop a PACE program on the commercial sector, and they used ARA funding to do that. So, there was, in some instances, tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars for consultants to come aboard and help jurisdictions set up those programs. I give you that as backdrop to let you know that Arlington hasn't spent any money to design our program with SRS coming onboard. When we put out the RFP, we did explicitly to say that we're looking for those interested program administrators to come forward and to help design and implement a program with no public funds. And they've been able to do it. And so, I'll tell you the secret as to how they're going about doing it, and how they're making money. In 2009, there was a clean energy financing enabling legislation at the state level in Virginia. And fast forward to the beginning of 2015, during that timeframe, the enabling legislation had its issues, in terms of not being very descriptive as to what was in and what was out, what could be done. And so, a number of stakeholders around the state put together an effort to update that enabling legislation. That took place during the legislative session in early 2015. It got signed up by the governor, and July 1 of 2015, it became official. And that's what we're working with now. After July 21, July 1 of 2015, we decided to go ahead and launch the effort to put out a request for proposal to get a program administrator. We recognize PACE is a relatively involved sort of program with a lot of technical, as well as financial dealings. We didn't necessarily feel comfortable trying to do it all ourselves, and so we reached out to those who have gone through it around the other parts of the country in setting up PACE programs, and reached out to them. In January 2017, our efforts with looking at the various proposals landed on selecting SRS as our program administrator. And during that whole process, we followed the procurement guidelines in Virginia, and so, that is available to any jurisdiction to look at, and to fast forward, and if they would like to, as I understand it from our purchasing department, there is the opportunity for other jurisdictions in the Commonwealth to ride that contract that we have with SRS, if they don't want to go through the RFP process. All throughout 2017, we worked together with a variety of stakeholders in setting up the ordinance, and that's one of the first things that a jurisdiction would need to do to launch a program. That's spelled out in the enabling legislation. And then, after that ordinance was done, we fine tuned some of our forms and some of the other details of the program, and we launched our program not too long ago, just during the beginning of 2018. And that is our website there, if you're at all interested in taking a look for the, all the details that come about with the program. Now, for backdrop, our community energy plan was adopted by our county board in the middle of 2013, so just about five years ago. That community energy plan looks at energy use, distribution, generation, and storage. 2007 being our baseline year, we look out to, all the way out to 2050. Our community energy plan looks at six different categories or chapters on energy use, and I picked out two of them, buildings and renewable energy, as the most in concert with why we developed the CPACE program. We essentially said, there are a lot of existing buildings in Arlington, commercial buildings that could use help and could become more energy efficient, and potentially use renewable energy to offset some of their energy needs. And then, in addition to that, we said that there are a number of buildings, new buildings coming onboard that could be more energy efficient than they normally would be in the first place, without any sort of incentive. So, we had consultants give us the lay of the land in terms of what financial incentive programs we could create. They gave us a whole, long list of them. I went around to various departments and worked together with our internal stakeholders to see which one made the most sense for us to do first, because we couldn't do everything. And we landed on PACE as being the most promising. And we'll explain why we felt that to be the case. And so, this is a direct nexus to our overall energy policy for the county. And that community energy plan, when it was adopted, it was adopted to be part of our comprehensive plan. And so, before 2013, there wasn't a sustainability or an energy policy element to our comp plan, and now there is with that community energy plan. So, as you get more and more projects being done on commercial buildings, you end up getting a number of things happening. You have more contractors doing more work. So, from an economic development and local job creation standpoint, those are very important, and those will occur as more and more projects follow the suit in using PACE program benefits. In addition to that, it makes the building more energy efficient, and so you end up getting those, not only the energy savings, but also CO2 emissions reductions. And I failed to mention with our community energy plan, there are three main areas that we focus on, and we say we make our decisions on energy-related items. Number one is economic competitiveness. Number two is energy security or resiliency, and number three is environmental commitment. So, as we make our decisions, we look at the ideas through those three lenses, and we say, does it make sense for us to pursue this, given those three things that are most important to us? And so, there you see those three things coming up pretty strong in all those instances, including if you end up putting renewable energy with some battery backup, that would help with your resiliency as well. So, in terms of what is commercial PACE programming, this is a bit of a lead-in to say, what is it exactly? Right now, buildings can finance renewable energy, as well as energy efficiency projects, whether they are existing buildings or new buildings. They do so with terms that are of the order of, let's say, seven to 10 years, with interest rates of the order of 4% to 5% interest. The problem, and the reason why a lot of the buildings sit on the sidelines, and they don't get those projects going, is because the payback on a lot of these types of projects exceed that seven to 10-year timeframe. So, it's very hard to get it past the CFOs of these companies to say, yeah, let's go ahead and do it. So, with PACE, you'll notice there on that second bullet, a number of things that PACE, we think, really does a good job at advancing and addressing the needs of the building owners, the property managers, and the developers that are out there that are saying, up until now, it doesn't really make sense for us to go ahead and do these things. So, this is what we call a special assessment-based form of financing. One of the key things, instead of seven to 10 years, it's up to 25 years, is the term of PACE financing. Helps to lower the energy cost of those buildings. And in addition to that, if there are any utility economic incentives or other economic incentives, those could all be layered on to the CPACE financing. Builders also very happy to hear about, when it comes to qualifying for the CPACE financing, there are no personal guarantees. This is based on the property and the property's ability to go ahead and pay its taxes and so forth, not on the individual. So, no individual or personal checks are being done on those building owners. And then, last but not least, when it comes to transferring the building, we will often talk with building owners, and we talk about that 70-year to 10-year timeframe, or out to 20 to 25 years. And the building owners will say, I don't know if I'm going to own the building that long. Why would I want to invest in something if I'm not going to even own it that long? The beauty with PACE is it follows with the property. It doesn't follow with the individual or the owner. And so, this is something where there's a lien placed on the property, and in the event that the building is sold before the PACE financing is paid off, it can just follow through to the next owner, much similar to a sewer assessment would, very similar to that. So, the next two slides are on existing buildings, and then for new construction. So, for existing buildings, the way it would go normally is the building owner would have a consultant come in, do an audit of the building, look at it comprehensively, try to find out those energy efficiency measures, or whether a renewable energy project is in the offing, and what it would cost. So, they go through the audit, and they present the owner with the various initiatives that are possible to improve the value of the building, and make it more energy efficient, and address a variety of energy issues. You see, the, once the building owner agrees to the set of conditions, and to the improvements to the building, and to the costs, they line themselves up with a capital provider. Arlington's program is designed to be an open market model, meaning that any capital provider that's out there, either a local bank, regional bank, or sometimes there are what are called CPACE specialty capital providers, that all they're out there doing is funding CPACE projects around the country. They can all come forward and say, we're going to offer you, property owner, this term for this interest rate, and if you accept, go ahead and sign on the dotted line. If they sign, then what happens is a lien is placed on the property that is tied to that financing. And then, they go ahead and repay it, per the terms of the contract. The goal here is to make it so the energy savings is greater than the PACE payments. That would be called an SIR greater than one, a savings-to-investment ratio greater than one. That's what we strive for. We may hit that mark, we may not, with our PACE projects. We're endeavoring to go ahead and do that. If we do end up doing that, that means from day one, that investment is a cash flow positive project for the property owner. Makes the buildings less risky, in the event that there's any sort of hiccups in the pricing for energy. And for existing buildings, through our research, we have found that Class B and C buildings are the target market, but in the event that a Class A building owner is interested as well, that is also a possibility. For new construction, it's a bit different. Essentially, with CPACE financing, from the design piece, we would advocate that the project teams would go ahead and to look at the ways the buildings could be at least 15% more energy efficient than the existing energy code. If that does happen, then it makes it so that building is 15% to 20% eligible for reducing the cost, or using CPACE financing toward the total eligible construction cost, meaning the building cost. This is not about the land, this is about the building itself. The beauty about this is the CPACE financing is of the order of 6% to 6.5% at most, is what we're finding in the PACE projects currently. If you compare that to owner equity contributions, or to mezzanine debt financing, usually with new construction, you have a number of different layers and pots of money that go toward these projects that are in the tens of millions, or even hundreds of millions of dollars. So, the owners and the property developers are able to pull out a portion of that financing, and it's often owner equity or the higher-cost mezzanine debt financing, which is of the order of 10% or greater, in terms of the cost of capital, and replace it with PACE financing, that is more of the order of 6% to 6.5%. So, it makes sense for the developers to go ahead and use that. And once again, the financing is out to 20 to 25 years. Now, we do know of the West Falls Church area Economic Development Project, and just as an example, if you, if Falls Church ended up designing and having on the books CPACE financing, then the commercial property developer would have CPACE financing as an option available to them with that sort of development. And so, it would offer just yet another option when it comes to that sort of project.
Do you find that, I'm actually shy, we save questions for the end, or?
Go for it.
That this type of program incentivizes folks to pursue LEED or something equivalent more willingly, or, I mean, during the, for new construction? And I know Arlington has also various requirements, in certain areas, we almost require LEED, but do you find that something like this makes it easier to obtain applicants or developers who are willing to commit to a LEED certified project of a higher level?
It makes it, it's a good question, and I would say it makes the economics more palatable to the property owners. When I first joined in with the county, for my first few years, I was a site planner, working together to help bring large projects through the site planning and site plan review process in Arlington. And I remember talking with the developers, and we do have site plan conditions that are voluntary, and it's a negotiation, and working together with the developers, they're looking at a project, and they're saying, do I want to go LEED silver, LEED gold? And they look at the FAR trade-off that they get and so forth. And so, what this does is it helps make the economics a little bit better. So, somebody is entertaining LEED silver, for instance, they may choose to go ahead and LEED gold, maybe the way they go, in order to meet that 15% threshold for energy efficiency. Because if they don't meet that, then they're not eligible for PACE financing for the new construction project. So, it's a good question, and just when you mentioned the requirement and so forth, I just want to mention, this is all a voluntary program. There is nothing saying that a property owner or a developer has to use this, it's simply on the books and available to them if they so choose, if they find it worth their while, and it is a voluntary program. And that would follow through as they go all the way through to the lien processing being put on their books. It's fully knowledgeable, and they're aware of the requirements and the consequences of their actions.
Is there any geographic constraints, where can it be, it's anywhere?
Anywhere in Arlington.
Destination in the county?
Right. When we set up the ordinance on the program, it is within the 26 square miles of the Arlington boundaries. So, eligible property types. I'll fast forward to what is not in. Condominiums, by explicit statement in the enabling legislation, condominiums are out of bounds, as are single-family homes. But then, really, after that, if you have five or more units in multifamily buildings, those are all in play. So, I'd say the vast majority of PACE projects around the country, that number of, I think it's over $550 million worth of projects in the commercial sector, have been done with CPACE since around 2009. And with all those projects, the vast majority of them are commercial office and multifamily.
But why was that a choice of allowing apartment buildings but not condominiums, just because of the ownership?
Yeah, I think primarily because of the ownership, but I think there's also, you know, potentially resistance with certain groups down in Richmond, realtors, and some others, and they just didn't want that to happen. So, I wasn't privy to the discussions and the negotiations that went on.
The state wanted to start out in a very conservative mode, so that's why they didn't even consider residential. They said, well, let's put our toe in the water, we'll just start with the things that we think are most secure.
Yeah, but it's just, in the way it functions, they're not much different, any multifamily building or condo, right?
Yeah. It's Richmond, I'm saying.
On the right-hand side, and when you think about condos versus, let's say, an apartment, you may have an apartment building owner that owns the HVAC unit that services the whole building, as opposed to individuals who have individual heat pumps and so forth. And so, logistically, an apartment building acts differently than a condo in that sense.
And I get that, because our commercial property is part of the condo association. So, like, changing out roofs and HVAC is a very fun game.
Sure. On the right-hand side are the eligible improvement examples, and one of the things I want to highlight for you is for the solar PV systems, photovoltaic systems, which take the energy from the sun and convert it to electricity. If a building owner has, let's say, a roof system that's 10, 15, 20 years old, they may be entertaining the idea of a roof replacement or an upgrade. PACE financing would allow, not only for the solar PV system itself to be financed, but also would recognize that the roof itself needs to be upgraded in order to support that system, and so they'd be able to weave in the cost of the roof and the PV system all into PACE financing. So, that is one of the benefits of the financing program. As I mentioned at the outset, SRS is our program administrator. We put out the RFP, saying we are not planning on paying either the program administrator any monies, public funds, or we're not planning on providing the capital for these CPACE projects. And so, these projects will be funded through the private financing sector, through those capital providers, and then the program administrator will receive a fee for any transactions or projects that come to closing. And so, that is a one-time fee, and is 2.5% of the entire project cost, with a cap of $75,000 per project. And so, that is the extent of the financing, and that's how they will make their money. SRS will make their money as projects come through the pipeline. The property owners can either bring forward a capital provider that they already have a relationship with, and if they decide that they don't want to, and they want to kind of float it across the market, we have a number of pre-approved capital providers that are currently on our website. And once the project is delineated, delineated, and the energy conservation measures, let's say, are out there, and the costs, that can be floated out to all of those providers, and if they choose, they can go ahead and send in their best offer to that property owner, for the property owner to review.
Okay, how many properties within Arlington have been done with this program?
Well, we started just a little under two months ago, and zero have thus far come forward. So, if you know anybody.
The record.
So, are, how many other Virginia localities have started?
None.
We're the first and the only.
Probably the first.
And this has been around legislature?
There's 30 other states that have PACE programs.
When was the law passed in Richmond? When did?
Well, July 1, 2015 was when it was passed, that really made it available to go ahead and move forward with it.
Okay. Since this was just put and finalized in January, you really haven't had any time, and I'm thinking of the schools that have been built and stuff like that. They were all financed before that.
Right.
Right, and schools and public sector projects are not in scope, so we can't.
Well, it's a good thing that I asked that, didn't I?
It is. And it, so, you know, that's unfortunate, but affordable housing and nonprofit sector is in play. And so, churches and nonprofits who are sometimes on a shoestring budget, they're looking to improve their buildings, and just in DC, a church went ahead and used their CPACE program to advance.
But don't worry, because the cost of our debt, you know, when we buy bonds, is cheaper than the cost of the PACE financing would be.
I'm not worried about it.
Okay.
I don't lose any sleep. But seriously, I was just wondering if, you know, about, do you have anything in the pipeline?
Yes, we've been in conversations with a number of property owners that are entertaining CPACE financing.
New or?
Existing buildings.
Existing buildings?
Yes. And it's an education process. What we're trying to do is trying to get people from the standard way in which they've always done things to something new. And I'm fully realizing that takes time. And so, we go and have hand-holding sessions and discussions with a variety of people, whether it be contractors, property owners, property managers, building owners, you know, it runs the gamut.
It just doesn't make sense to me, they should be a lot smarter.
What's the pushback? I'm curious, what's like the counterargument? What do you mean, you know, as far as, well, two levels. One, when Arlington passed this, was there any opposition? Was there any resistance when the board adopted this? And then, when you meet with folks, you know, where do you see their reluctance is, other than the fact that it's new? What's their main concern, you would say?
Sure. So, I'll handle the first one. When we went forward to the county board to have the board enact the ordinance, not only was there no resistance and no issues, but it went on consent. So, it went through on consent, and we were good to go. The pushback that we're hearing from property owners is, the initial thing that they look at is 6% to 6.5%. And once again, this is kind of the standard way they look at things. They're like, this percent is better than this percent, so I'm going to go with this. And so, they think of 4.5% to 5% as their financing they can go get at a bank around the corner, and they're like, why wouldn't I do that? So, we have to show them side-by-side, and we have these, you know, sheets that show side-by-side standard status quo sort of financing versus PACE financing. And we show them the bottom line, and we show them why it's advantageous for them to go ahead and to do this. And they look at it, and they're like, eh, okay. So, it's going to take some time to go ahead and have that education, and get past that stumbling block.
And so, they can't understand the future.
So, maybe I'm being dense, but what is that bottom line? And then, what is the, is the special, is, who's backing this? There's no personal guarantee. Is it the, is what makes the special, the special assessment lien that's, like, couldn't a bank just loan me money at 6.5% for 25 years for the heck of it?
No. Well, I won't say no. I would say, I challenge you to find a bank that would do that, because they will usually look at their financing, and they will, and we've had discussions with banks, and they're, and they say, you know, we can't go past 10 years. We often like seven-year money.
So, what allows them to go past 10 years?
Well, a lot of it is the CPACE financiers that work in multiple CPACE programs around the country, they get their money from private equity investors that are really in for the long haul, and they don't have the seven-year money and seven-year timeframe when they're loaning the money, they're not concerned with that seven years or that 10 years. They're much more willing to go 20 to 25 years on a very solid project, where it's backed by government programs like ours, and that's, and they see the lien that is tied to.
So, is the lien, I'm trying to figure what it is that's special about this, is the lien?
It is the years, it is the transferability, it is the personal guarantee, and it is the lien. All those things are, it depends on the owner as to what button is triggered.
Right, but I'm saying, the reason why a bank.
The PACE loan is first in line, if there's a default.
And that's.
It's above any other law.
By the law, is what I'm saying. I guess what I'm saying is if a bank or some rich person's a lot of money, they could do all these things, except they can't put a lien on the property.
That's correct.
So, that's, the whole point is the legislation lets them do that, that's why they don't need a personal guarantee.
It's the taxing power of the jurisdiction.
Yeah.
But it's also the length of time. I mean, this is, these are mechanical systems that you're getting a 25-year payout on.
Sure, but I'm saying, a bank could decide.
So, most, you can't, a lot of projects turn over at seven years.
Correct.
You flip them, they sell them to another party, and, you know, you're basically talking about infrastructure that can't, shouldn't, could have a long life, but it's being financed.
And the HVAC system won't pay for itself in that seven years, and so.
And so, when you do your side-by-side, the reason why it makes sense is, your $500,000, you're paying over 25 years instead of seven years, and so your monthly payments are.
You got it.
And that's why.
Yep. And the 20 to 25 years is important, because what you're financing is. And the 20, 25 years is important, because what you're financing is the effective useful life of a lot of these pieces of equipment. And so, that's where it really comes in handy. That last bullet is important also. Mortgage holder consent is necessary by law. In the legislation, it notes that each of the projects need to have mortgage holder consent, but are, once again, SRS has experience in a variety of programs around the country. They've gone through this, they've had the discussion with the existing mortgage holders, and it's not an issue. It's recognized by the mortgage holder. The reduced risk and the better value of the building is brought forth with the C-PACE program.
And is there any concern that this program would inadvertently give Class C office buildings a longer life than we really want them to have?
That's a good question.
Well, there's, from an environmental standpoint, there's the embodied energy that you're saving by not knocking down the building and so forth. There are economic development people that may look at that same building and say, "Hmm, you know, there's maybe better value." So there's mixed interests, but I would say, we're in it to support the property owners, and whatever is going to make them happy and stay in the county and improve the value of the building and improve their bottom line, we're all for it.
And the city has done tax programs to incent people to renovate older buildings, build new buildings, or add on older buildings, so this would be very complimentary.
Correct.
You mean our city?
Yeah, but I know that program, we try to craft that. I mean, it's a balance, and I agree, I think it's a great idea, but, yeah, there are times when we want a certain area to redevelop, and encouraging them to buy 25 years' worth of upgrades is not going to do that. And I think our, Jim's talking about, I think is scaled to try to have that not apply to some big tract of land that we want to redevelop, so, but I think at the end of the day, an owner is going to either be interested in redeveloping in the next 25 years and then not be interested in this program, or they're going to need it for the long haul, and something like this would be a good fit, so.
My hope is that city would be able to move forward on something like this and put it on the books, so that we can talk to these major developments that are coming forward in the city, and a tool like this might be available for them to consider. You can't consider it if it isn't adopted.
Right.
You've got two very major projects. Financing these things is hard. Many big projects like this do have mezzanine financing, and it's more expensive, and they want their money a whole lot quicker, with a whole lot more interest rate. And that's been hard to hit lead gold or these other, these other things, because that's where budgets get cut. So being able to have this on the books, so a group like Inside or a group like Founders Row has the option to explore it, and then the project up at the school site, this would be a nice tool to have and say, "Please, look at this and see if it's of value to you." It's a voluntary program, but you can't do it if you don't have it on the books.
I think your interest is more in the new buildings than it is in upgrading the...
Right, right.
Absolutely. We have high expectations of these new projects, that they be best-in-class. It helps to be able to have a financing mechanism that looks long-term, says 25 years, we're going to give you modest costs, and we're going to stretch that out so you can afford to do that work, as opposed to saying, "Well, I'm never going to get the payback on this quick enough, so I've got to cut back to lead something."
And we do have some areas that aren't great redevelopment options, and if there was a way to encourage them to upgrade, that would be, that would be a good second option.
So, something other than policy, does Arlington have any skin in the game at all?
Other than a community energy plan?
Okay, okay.
Making the world a better place?
Okay, yeah. So it's actually no brainer to have it on the books?
Correct, yeah.
There's no public money.
There's no public money, either in paying for the program administrator nor in financing the projects.
There is the issue of what's the impact on the various departments, our treasurer and all this, which is a thing that we're going through now, especially with Kate Walker's...
Bits and pieces of all the people.
Right.
Yeah, and how they figure out that.
It's the things you don't know about, and it's like, "Oh, I didn't think about that."
Right.
Somebody's got to collect the money.
Yeah, you have to, you've got a piece of that one, you've got a piece of that salary, a piece of that salary, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Although even collecting the money, Arlington doesn't even do that.
So we said it, right, and let me...
So you've got your policy all done, and we could just borrow it?
Yeah, we're happy to share. We're happy to share all of our experiences. This is the start of, you know, ongoing discussion, and our purchasing agent has provided a package of materials to the Loudoun County purchasing agent that wanted it. If your purchasing agent wanted it, they'd be happy to provide it. So I can put people in touch and have that discussed.
With council and with, as the city manager? Know anything in on this?
Our city manager?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. We presented to the EDC. Actually, I started out thinking this was just strictly an environmental program, so I went ESC route. Then the more I understood about it, I said, "This is really economic development." So I went to the EDC, and Jim was there, we had a very good presentation, Wyatt Shields was there. And then we went to the EDA, and every place we've gone to said, "This is great."
I don't remember going to EDA.
You weren't at that meeting.
I missed the meeting.
It was election, it was election day. I still remember it.
Oh, that's why I missed it.
That was the day we did it.
See, you did things when I wasn't there.
Yeah, so anyway, we've kind of gone around and introduced the idea to different groups, but it still has to go before city council and get an ordinance passed. So that's, kind of, this is part of the due diligence.
Yeah.
The planning commission has been very much of a leader in terms of energy efficiency, aspiring to higher standards for energy efficiency, and being part of the LEED program, aspiring to a higher standard. You need tools to do that. We have a good market here, our market's not as strong as Arlington, so how can you help projects? And this is a way to help.
But at this point in time, we need it.
We need it.
We need all the tools in our toolbox.
So it just seemed like, with your, you know, you've had this program of getting guest speakers, and Rich was available. I think, Rich, you'd heard about it, I don't know if you had a chance to attend the forum that was held.
Yes.
But, you know, I...
Oh, you were there too?
I was.
That was a good meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was very well done. A lot of really good information from the folks in DC, and kudos to you for putting that on, that was great.
That was a good one.
So, just trying to, you know, learn from our neighbors and share ways of doing things, particularly the ability to ride contract procurement's really hard, and doing that stuff separately, so I'm really excited that the county has designed this so that anyone in Virginia can use the same approach.
Yeah, whereas Arlington issued an RFP to select the program administrator, who's Scott Dickey, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, we could simply ride that contract and not have to go through that RFP process. And the program administrator charges, what is it, 2.5% fee on every loan that they close? And they're happy to get that 2.5% from us, if we have, you know, entities here that are willing to do that.
What kind of responses you get to the RFP?
I'm not able to divulge like the, well, I can, I can say we had about a handful of proposals that came forward. And all of them, I knew them in advance, I knew the companies, they work nationally, and they were very good, and so...
Is SRS a national firm?
Right, yes, so they're operating in seven other states as a program administrator and supporting those programs. So we thought that we got the best of the best when we selected them.
Plus, Scott Dickey lives in East Falls Church, so he's very close by.
He is local, yes. They're based out of Connecticut, but Scott is the local presence. When they signed the contract, they established a Virginia office in Arlington with Scott. Looking at it on a regional perspective, DC has a PACE program, Montgomery County has a PACE program, as do other jurisdictions in Maryland. So once again, we're in Arlington, the first one in the Commonwealth of Virginia to have a commercial PACE program, but there is a regional group called the Mid-Atlantic Pace Alliance that is endeavoring to help make it easy to understand PACE, no matter which jurisdiction you're in, to make it easy for those stakeholders to understand it. And so we are a MAPPA partner, and we're working together with them on a regional basis to try and help develop those consistencies across numerous programs. So, the, each jurisdiction in the Commonwealth outside of Arlington, if it's interested in developing a PACE program, the ordinance, as was mentioned by others earlier, that's one of the first things that needs to be done to go ahead and to establish the program. And then, once that ordinance is done, you can do this in a parallel path, you can develop the ordinance and the program materials, which is what we did, since there was such a long timeline. But that program administration approach would be something that would be, that your group of staff would likely be talking about. In my efforts, I worked together with the county attorney's office, the Department of Management and Finance, real estate assessment officials, the planners in our planning department, as well as others in environmental services. And so, through those multiple departments, we worked together to understand what it meant to go ahead and stand up a PACE program. A lot of programs right now, they will, once a project gets funded, the payment will happen as a line item on the tax bill. So the property owner gets the tax bill, and there's simply another line item, a special assessment, that's on their property tax bill. So every six months, they end up paying the PACE payment, and that's how a number of other jurisdictions have gone in doing this. Another way to do it, in the enabling legislation, allows it to be put on the utility bill. So if you have a local utility and you want to go that route, that's yet another option. So these were all proffered and put forward to the county attorney's office. They decided to go a different route, and so we're not handling any of the payments. Once the project goes to closure, it is a direct payment between the capital provider and the property owner, per the terms of the agreement. And so if they choose to do it monthly, every two months, every six months, whatever they choose, that's outside of the county's hands. We are not a middle man or a middle person to process the payments. And so when it comes to staff time to do this, really, you're looking at it, it is more of the education effort and marketing the program is the bulk of what's going on in terms of administering the program as we speak. And SRS is out there beating the bushes and doing the exact same thing, and doing the trainings. And we are going to have a training at Arlington County Central Library this Thursday. So if you know contractors who may be interested in PACE, it is a free training session starting 8:00 and goes to 11:30 at our central library. And if you want to, I can send the link, so you can share that with your contractors to come aboard.
So SRS, I mean, they want to get someone on board because they don't get paid, right?
Right.
An actual project.
They are incentivized, yes. An earlier slide talked about the aligning of all interests, and that's exactly what we're talking about.
So, Rich, could something like this be used for a district energy program if you had a large site where you had a central plant of some type? Is that something that would be, if it hit that 15% to 20% improvement?
Yeah, you would have to show a nexus or a connection between the improvement of the building per the energy code for the project, and then with the equipment that's being used. So in the instance, if there's a district energy system somewhere, let's say this building right here is going to hook up to the district energy system, they could point to it and say, "The equipment that we're putting into this building is only because there's a district energy system to tie into, which in turn will make us more energy efficient." If you can make that argument, then it would be an eligible improvement. So it's complex, but it is possible, I would say. The notation here is what SRS is doing, so it's program administrator duties, goes with the ongoing support services of various stakeholders. It provides very, what I'll call slick analysis tools, where they have something that's trademarked called Pace Works, which is a form that they give to all potential projects. They go ahead and fill out the form, and out the other end comes an economic analysis tool for the property owner to look at and digest. There's also working together with all the stakeholders involved with this, and so it's the banks, the contractors, the property owners, the property managers, and so forth. And then also, they do separate underwriting and reviewing of the numbers to make sure that the program is legitimate and the review was done well, because this program is of public interest. We want to make sure that what is happening and what is being designed will perform that way moving forward. So that's in the best interest of the county. As was mentioned before, we do have the cooperative procurement that we've gone through. We have the contract, which has these sections. So we went through, we said, "This is what SRS needs to do to design a program, administer it, go through marketing and outreach, training, registration," and then also coming back and noting to us the greenhouse gas emissions, the energy savings, the cost savings, and doing QAQC, quality assurance and quality control on those projects. That's all part and parcel of what SRS is on the hook contractually to do with County of Arlington and our program. And so we have that contract, happy to provide it for anyone who's interested, if that's something that Falls Church City would be interested in.
Well, see, the whole thing is, is that you've got all the work done, and we, our staff, you know, we've got small staff, and for them to go ahead and develop it from get-go would be reinventing the wheel, which it takes too darn much time.
It does take time.
And too much effort.
I've lived it for a few years, yes.
Yeah, so...
So I'm happy to share, you know, the idea.
We like sharing.
Rising waters lift all ships, right? So our next steps from any jurisdiction, enacting the ordinance, establishing the program, which is noted here, all the various things that go on. And once you launch the program, having the trainings, and then bringing forward the projects, and making it available as yet another financing option for those existing and the new buildings.
I was saying, why wouldn't we have to put up a RFP? Why wouldn't we just be able to ride along with it?
No, that's what, that's what he's saying, we can't. That's the option.
You can, you can ride that contract, which...
Why is that? Why wouldn't we, why would not, why wouldn't we have to put it out for RFP?
Because the contract is written to allow other entities...
The contract you've already...
Yes.
We went through the competitive procurement process already. And so, you don't have to, you could go through the RFP process all on your own and do that exact same process. Any jurisdiction is capable of doing that.
We're finding that Virginia is very difficult for one jurisdiction to ride another contracts, another jurisdiction's contract. This is an exception, because it fits into a special service category, so we actually have the opportunity without question to do it here.
So that's the end of my presentation. There's my contact information. Once again, Scott Dickey's contact information is there, is our program administrator, and I thank you very much once again for the time, and your attention, and very good questions, and I'm happy to stay as long as you need me.
And also, I know Kate Walker is here, and Kate, did you have questions?
I've been through this so many times.
Appreciate her being here, so. We're real excited about the commission being exposed to this, various members have been, and I think it has a lot of potential, it's pretty timely for me.
Yeah, and this is something that would be very good for the council to jump on. We don't have, we can't do anything. Whoops.
The hope is that this will get to our city council, they'll put it out to boards and commissions for comment, and we'll have an opportunity to make the formal comment at that point.
Yeah, that would be, it sounds like the next step, but that's always a challenge, so.
So this is kind of a work session, I guess, for us in advance.
Well, Mr. Dooley, thank you very much. This is exactly why we have this speaker series, to learn about new concepts and things that could benefit the city, and this seems like a win-win all the way around. It sounds like a few administrative hurdles we would have to clear first, but this was really helpful information, and I was unaware of it, unlike Mr. Stevens, who seems to be part of the process. So this is really helpful, and exactly what I was hoping to accomplish with this. So thank you for your time, and the offer for us to, as a city, benefit from your hard work.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And I, the way I look at it, it is, this is the start of me coming forward and having a dialogue and discussion with you. Happy to stop by in any way or fashion that would be helpful to you all. Just let me know.
Yeah, no, I mean, it looks like your hard work will let us move at a faster pace, which is fantastic.
No pun intended.
You're right.
Rich, thank you so much, appreciate it, and great to see you.
Good seeing you, Joe. And give me a shout.
Okay, very good.
All right, well, the next item is receipt of petitions. But before we did that, I did want to welcome formally our newest member, Mr. Puentez. So, welcome, and I'm very pleased that you're joining us. We have, or I think I've been personally briefed on it, but maybe you want to just say a word or two? I know I'm putting you on the spot here, just to say what you're, why you were interested in the commission, and, you know, what, I know you'd been on it previously, but just help to introduce yourself to the rest of the board.[1718.88]
I appreciate it, thank you. I was on the commission, I don't know, 10 years ago, I think? Had to get off for various reasons, other obligations. I think this is a critical time in the city's history. A lot of critical development projects, and not just here in the city, but in the entire region. So it's also, I think, a really interesting and exciting time to be doing this work. I think this is conversations that are happening nationally, and so just want to be back a part of it again. So really happy for the opportunity and look forward to working with you.
Terrific. Well, we're happy to have you. And I know you have a lot of expertise, both from your previous experience and also professionally, so. Welcome aboard.
Thanks.
All right, so let me open this up to petitions. Ms. G, have you received any petitions?
Nobody can find us.
It has been well advertised, however. They may not be able to find it.
Our emails are worse.
All right, the next item is old business, which is the capital bike share update. And are we going to get a quick update on that? We've seen the, I mean, I've seen the documentation here, but are you going to present it to us?
Yeah, I'll, so I'll just do a quick summary of the memo.
Okay, great.
So I'm, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Carrie Odenino. Thank you for Chair Wadiska and members of the planning commission for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm working on capital bike share. I'm the lead staff member on the project. So the first phase of the City of Falls Church capital bike share system is expected to open in fall 2018. So phase one of the bike share expansion includes 11 stations and will be installed in the fall while the installation of phase two stations is expected in fall 2019. And so tonight, we'll look at what is bike share? What policy guidance was used to guide the bike share network? What are the phase one bike share station locations? And what are the project costs and schedule? So what is bike share? Capital bike share is a bicycle sharing system that allows individuals to borrow shared bicycles on a short-term basis and provides connections to regional transportation networks, including rail, bicycle, and pedestrian networks. In total, there are 440 bike share stations that stretch across the DC area from DC all the way out to Ruston. And bike share is frequently used as a first mile, last mile solution by individuals traveling to and from rail transit. In terms of accessing bike share, bike share users can pay for options ranging from a single trip for $2 to an annual membership for $85 or $8 a month. And rides less than 30 minutes incur no additional fees. While rides lasting longer than 30 minutes incur additional fees for each additional 30-minute increment. Looking at policy guidance, the city has been thinking about bike share for a while. Mobility for all modes is the transportation chapter of the city's comprehensive plan. And planning for bike share was first discussed in mobility for all modes, which has a vision for expanded mode choice, where both bikes and bike share are a part of the solution. And the city's bicycle master plan looks at potential bike routes as well as bike share corridors in the city. In terms of the planning of bike share stations, there are several criteria that provide guidance for this process, including proximity to key destinations, station density, and accessibility to key bicycle routes. In terms of station density, stations should be located within a half-mile of other bike share stations and ideally should be located within a quarter-mile of other bike share stations. So phase one, station locations were endorsed by city council at their August 14, 2017 meeting. Due to right-of-way limitations, installation of the West Street and WOD Trail and the Eden Center locations are not included in the phase one map, which is in this memo. These station locations and additional station locations could be explored as part of a phase two installation?
I'm just curious.
Yes.
Anyway, I was just curious. I realize that we couldn't get those because of right-of-way, but we do own property in these neighborhoods, or at least, like, we have a Greenway, a Paper Street off of Cherry. We have a park, and we have tennis courts off of Cherry as well that would at least give us a place that we own, that we could put a station, that would at least give us some station in this area because we have this big hole here in this entire neighborhood walks and bikes into the East Falls Church metro. I mean, I, because I live there, I walk to the metro sometimes, and there's a ton of people coming out of that neighborhood into East Falls Church metro. So it's kind of bad that there's just nothing for that neighborhood.
So which, sorry, which neighborhood exactly?
Um, I'm talking about between 29 and Seven Corners. That whole residential neighborhood there, there's a big hole there.
Yeah.
And that is a major walking, biking neighborhood that goes to East Falls Church metro. And I'm just wondering, I know we tried to put more stations in and it's not, that did not work out. But we do, like I said, we own a Paper Street, we own a park, we own tennis courts all along Cherry Street. And in fact, if we could put them on the Paper Street, we own, a lot of people use that Paper Street to kind of cut across the neighborhood and then go down to the metro. So I just, I just throw it out there, it's, you know, I know we're looking for places we own. And the other place, I wonder if we contemplate it too. But this may be hard because 24 Fitness has a ton of room at their back parking lot.
That's for sure.
That would be, because it's just, I just, the only thing I can say is like, and I see it on the other end as well, we don't have enough stations near the metro stations. It's, we have a nice cluster in downtown, which is great, but I mean, there's just a lot of movement between neighborhoods in the metros and so.
There are stations that, some of the metro stations in the city downtown, perhaps the East Falls Church.
There's just one there, yeah. And we're talking about doing one at West Falls Church. But the problem is, is if you live, like, at my house, if there was a bike station near me, I would, I would use that bike to the station and back.
Phase one stations are particularly residential.
No, no, I understand that, but if you look, there's just big holes.
Oh, no, but the whole other side of town.
Isn't there one at North Roosevelt on this map?
So there's no phase two map?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I know it's there, but there's a big hole in that middle section there. And what they were saying is that we needed to have places we had right-of-way, and we have a ton of right-of-way on Cherry Street, on North Cherry. We have three different locations that we own property, so, I don't know.
So, yeah, so.
So I'm just saying for future.
Yeah, for phase two, maybe.
Because if we're going to look at places where we can get easy right-of-way, that would be it. And I would also think that on Van Buren, we own parkland right there. It would be another place that where you could get, we own it so we could get a station in if we wanted to. But, and I under, I mean, I get that we're trying to do the easy ones, we're trying to do just the downtown, but.
Well, there was something in the process. If I remember correctly, you presented at the Parks and Rec meeting, and I had asked you at the time if that, where the locations, the decision for the locations, if it was coming back to us. And at that point in time, there was a time situation where you had to get back to council. So actually, the planning commission, I don't think, had any, any choices or any input to where they were going to be, which at that time seemed a little strange to me.
So I did come to planning commission last year. In terms of the specific on-the-street spots, I wasn't able to come back to planning commission.
Right.
But in terms of, like, the generalized stationed areas.
Right, but I remember you presented the options for the final choices at that meeting that I was at. And, you know, and you weren't able to bring it over here before, had to go to council or something like that.
One thing I would say, just, the city had a consultant tool design who does this professionally, to look at what are the best station locations, which ones should have the most ridership. And we also were limited in terms of, how many stations can we roll out that we can afford? And so we were limited to, we were looking at 11 or 12 or 13 slots. So it has been a challenge to do bike share when it was a challenge getting money. And then it coming through Fairfax. There are a number of issues having to do with procurement. The difficulty of procurement with this program, in contrast to what we heard about C-PACE today, has been challenging. And there is competition for these, for the parts and the stations themselves, which is one of the reasons it's being delayed to the fall because of parts availability. And the city has not been able to put dollars on, you know, dollars down, saying, reserve those parts for me. So we're, we're trying to get phase one rolled out and operating and successful. I think we also heard from people in the southern part of the city near TJ, you know, there are these larger residential areas that don't have things. So I think those are areas to look at in the future. But what we, what this has tried to do is put these in places where they thought they could get the most ridership and the most ridership support. So I think these are all very good comments, and we need to look at how do we serve this better. The challenge so far has been getting the money and then getting the, getting the stations and getting them installed for the first phase. So we were disappointed that we couldn't do it this spring, but it has to do with literally.
Well, we do have, like, federal funding.
Federal funding, procurement, we have, you know, there's a competitive process. They're made in America parts that people have to reserve. We didn't have, we don't have money down. So this is, these are some of the challenges of just what it's worth. It's been a difficult procurement process. One, to get money, and two, to get the things.
And I recognize that, but I was just, because you had mentioned that part of the problem was right-of-way. I just want to point out that we do own property in those areas that kind of have holes right now.
No, I think right-of-way is an important issue, and if you have public places where these can be done, there are a lot of criteria too about sunlight and different things, but. I do even know both of these are large residential areas. We've heard that, you know, it'd be nice to be able to have some things in both of those areas because they are, as you look at the maps, they're, they don't have stations.
Has the city, has anyone, you know, dockless bike sharing now is becoming a thing? Which is, I don't know if it's controversial or not, but there's, you know, like Lime Bike and Mobi. There's in DC, and I don't know, and obviously the infrastructure required for that is almost nothing. I think the companies give you the bikes and then, now granted, I know people complain that, you know, those kind of wind up where, wind up in the middle of, you know, the sidewalk somewhere. But I don't know if that's something that cities even, I mean, I don't know if we, that we're on their radar screen given where we are in the region, but I know that's a, it's becoming, I don't even know what it's doing as far as, is it cannibalizing the use of these things with capital bike share, but.
We've been trying to focus on, let's get this program, which we've worked hard to get money, stood up. There are a number of issues, I think you saw some of this in the news recently of bikes left on sidewalks, what's going to happen when the wind hits them. I know in China, there are a lot of problems with this, so.
Right.
It's not, these are bad ideas, but we're trying to get this piece done. And so we focused on this job.
In Durham, they have taken to making giant balls of bicycles out of them, just.
Yeah, really?
Yeah, they've got like 30 of them, yeah, they pile them all up.
How are they monetized? Is it ads on the bikes or? Oh, so you do, oh, it's an app?
Yeah, it's terrible.
So you're, but you're allowed to just leave it anywhere?
Right.
Yeah, it's just so sloppy.
They have people that run around and collect them and set them up overnight, but it's.
Oh, okay.
I, I think it's an interesting model that is too soon, so maybe a year or two.
But I guess what I'm saying is, like, if you're not pulling it from a dock, how are they going to make sure you pay?
It has a monor on the bike.
Right. Yeah, but like.
It's heavily adopted in Silver Spring where I work, and it's just sloppy.
Is the bike locked in a way that you can't ride it until you unlock it?
Some of them lock, some of them, if it was leave, yeah. Some of them lock, you lock the things, other things they just, they just like.
Are they doing?
No.
Yeah, it's just sloppy.
We're concerned too about, we've got, we've made a lot of effort to have streetscape that has room for pedestrians and wanting to make sure that that room is there as opposed to storage for random vehicles left in whatever form they're left.
DC, so dockless bikes, they haven't seen a significant, significant impact on capital bike share. And they're viewing it more as a complement to their capital bike share system, that the dockless bikes can go to places where there maybe wasn't enough space for the dock.
Yeah, there's problems, like, it's cool because you don't have to leave it at a dock, but there's no guarantee it's going to be there when you come back out, so now you're.
Right.
Up the creek without a paddle.
Yeah, and I just had heard about it, it's an interesting idea.
So I can touch on project costs and schedule if.
I'm going to switch with Mr. Stoddard, who has returned from city council. I think he has work for you all to do in terms of preparation for your retreat.
Yep. Okay, so, so in terms of project cost, the city received $2 million in grant funding for capital costs of the project and $500,000 in operating funds. And the capital grant funding of $2 million will comfortably cover the cost of the stations. In addition to the cost of the stations, the capital funds are also being used for soft costs, including consulting fees, right-of-way acquisition, and staff costs. In terms of operating costs, cost recovery for membership and user fees for the system would be between 35 and 62%, according to the ridership analysis that was conducted by Foursquare last year. The city will also have some costs covered through station sponsorships and potential advertising revenue. And because of this grant funding, assuming revenue projections hold, the city could operate 14 bike share stations without incurring local costs for at least the first five years of operation. And additional grant support could, can be requested for future years. As mentioned earlier in the presentation, staff anticipates that installation for phase one of the capital bike share expansion will occur in fall 2018 and phase two will occur in fall 2019. The largest impediment to delivering the stations before fall 2018 is a combination of manufacturing time and procurement requirements. And because the capital funds are federal, required steps in the procurement process must be followed sequentially instead of parallel. And there are additional requirements for review and approval at both the state and federal level. The longest steps remaining in the procurement process are the invitation for bid and equipment manufacturer. So the IFB has to be out for 30 days, and the manufacturer process is expected to take four to five months. And then the chart at the end of the memo shows additional timing information and steps.
So I'm, I'm confused about those last things.
Sure.
We, we have heard about this, this has come before us on more than one occasion. And I know the planning commission has previously been very, very supportive of it and excited, myself included. I was under the impression that it was going to happen in May.
Right.
And then something shifted. And I'm hearing that it is, we have to put it out for bid. What, who's bidding on this? Why is, I guess I just don't understand the process at this point. I thought capital bike share did it. Who's bidding on what?
Yeah, so, so capital bike share is just all of the municipalities that are members of the capital bike share system. Capital bike share is operated currently by Motivate. And then the bikes are from PBSC, and the stations are from 8D Technologies. So, and through the procurement process, we received a finding in the public interest, which means that we get to specify the blueprint for the equipment.
Which equipment are we talking about?
The current.
Station itself?
The station itself and the bike.
And the bike? We're specifying the bike? Isn't it standardized?
So. Well, so exactly, so it is standardized, so we, when we put out the invitation for bid, it's a technical document.
Right.
And we're not asking for people to provide us with concepts for the equipment. We're, we're asking for just bids.
So multiple companies sell the bikes that work in the system?
So.
Well, we're just going through a process, and we know that there's only one provider, obviously.
That's why I think he's trying to.
They have to be provided that opportunity, so it's federal dollars. It has to be open to fair and open competition. So.
It should be red.
Sounds like it's.
We can specify, as Ms. Odenino said, we can specify the blueprint for those bikes, but we can't prohibit other people from, from trying to construct them.
Red and heavy.
So. There are multiple companies making these bikes, I, or we.
So.
I mean, I understand we have to go through this process, but is, as Mr. Rankin said, this is just, there's one company that we all know what the specs are, and we all know what the.
We, so there are multiple, multiple companies that produce bike share systems. We ex, we expect, and when other jurisdictions, Arlington, Alexandria, DC, put out an RFP in, I think, 2016, they did receive multiple bids, but they weren't of the same quality of equipment. And so.
Well, we obviously need something that's compatible with the station at East Falls Church.
Right. So we, we did attempt to do a sole source to allow us to just purchase from the companies. that other jurisdictions have purchased equipment from. We were denied the ability to sole source. So that's why we're doing the invitation for bid.
So is that the main shift between May and fall? Is this new federal step?
So we, when we spoke with the vendor that we expect to reply to the IFB for the stations in December, they had given us a two to three month estimate on manufacturing and putting the equipment together. When I spoke with them a few weeks ago, they were out of stock of some of the, the Buy America slabs, which are a part of the station, of the platform. And so in order to get those slabs in stock. They would need. An order. Which we would have to place after we put the IFB out and after we have a contract signed. And so. That, there's a part that's no longer in stock for the vendor that we expect to reply or put in a bid to the IFB. And. Part of it has to do with the Buy America requirement, which requires, because it has steel and we have to use American steel per the federal.
So talking about that.
Oh, right.
Do you beat the tariffs?
Not at this rate.
So we're, we're doing what we, staff is doing. What we can to accelerate that timeline and. Communicating with sort of the vendor.
Well, look, obviously you need the $2 million funding.
Right.
So there's no leeway there, but it's a shame to have missed now the spring and then the summer season and.
Right.
This is an idea that's.
It's disappointing.
Yeah. September or Thanksgiving?
September.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
These are still somewhat, that's good bike weather in the fall.
Yeah, I mean.
It, it is possible that we could get it in earlier, but I think that's a realistic timeline.
Okay. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Another thing I'd be interested to do, you know, the city should also be leading up to construction of the stations. Like put like some signs saying future location for bike share. That way people know it's coming, people who live past by, you know, you know. They know, oh, bike share's coming right here. And then, you know, they know to expect it. Future site, future site of Falls Church City Bike Share, you know.
One of the, the advertisers could put up that sign.
Whoever.
Whoever wants to.
Just to help publicize it. I mean, some people may know it's coming. People may have seen our website or other things, but they actually see a sign in the ground that this is, this is future site of bike share. People get excited about it, like the group ridership.
We do have a grant through the Department of Rail and Public Transportation for transportation demand management. And through that grant, we have funding for incentives. And so we are hoping to do a campaign where we offer city, city residents like reduced price memberships to get sort of. Get it going and, and do some advertising through that grant, so.
But that's what, to what you were saying, it's just the darn thing is, we've got to do a lot of publicity for a lot of things that are going on, that the public, there's so much going on that the city is doing and nobody knows about it.
You know about it.
I know.
What's the, there's a quick answer to this. What's the revenue mile? You talked about cost recovery of 30 to 60%.
Yeah.
But if you're, it's a regional system, so if you're at Tyson's Corner, or you live in Tyson's Corner, you're paying a membership. You take a, you take a bike to Falls Church, you pick it up again and you take it home. How does Falls Church generate revenue from that?
Yeah, so it's a, the revenue is distributed by station of jurisdiction where the trip originated. So if a trip originates in the city, that, that revenue comes back to the city.
It's obtained by trip.
If it's a membership, if they live in the city. Yeah.
So there is an incentive to.
Because like half of trips are originating in Arlington.
Right across the border, like right across the border on both of those cases.
Well, let's get it going.
So is Falls Church getting revenue now from people who are members?
Um, yeah, actually.
I'm a member, for example.
Oh, no. So no, we're not, the city is not. So.
Not until you actually have a station in the system.
Right.
I, I think one of the things that's come up through all these questions and all the conversation in the report is the detail and the level of technical work that has to go into all these projects. And the city is really fortunate to have Ms. Odenino working on this project that she has a real passion for capital bike share and alternative forms of transportation to the auto. And she puts that into all the work and you can see that the level of scheduling, the level of detail. All the pieces that have to be pulled together to make this happen is no small feat. If you look at another jurisdiction, they have a much larger team of people working on this. We're lucky to have someone like Carrie who can network across jurisdictional lines. The number of professional organizations she belongs to really benefits the city when it comes to a project like this.
Yeah, I think it's a great project and I appreciate all your hard work. I'm just excited to get it here. We've been talking about it for a little while, so.
Yeah, it's been going on for a while.
You might just got to leapfrog over.
It did, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Do you have more to report? I, looks like you've covered it, but I don't want, we interrupted you with questions.
I think, well. I guess if, if you have any, I know we had some suggestions on phase two. If there are any additional suggestions on phase two, I could, I could take those.
Well, I don't think it's a suggestion, but.
Yeah.
And you have denoted it as phase two for West Falls Church, but I think, I think that's not a phase one location. I didn't think it was. Did I have that wrong?
The West Falls Church Metro Station?
Yeah.
That is, that's now phase one, yeah.
All right, maybe my information was out of date at some point. Okay, no, then never mind. I think that's just a key node in the system here and I didn't realize it was on the phase one, so my mistake.
Might want a report after phase one is around for a while and then before you go into phase two.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
It's a year, it's a year between phase one and two, right?
Phase two will likely start either just after phase one goes in or even before because of the hurdles to get through the federal regulatory process. That is specific easement language, so I think that process would have already, we'd already certainly have plans to, to get that started.
And you don't have to put on another RFP at that point.
Uh, we would have to put out another IFB.
IFB. Because, like, we wouldn't be able to say we have phase one and a phase two give us price for both of those in our initial IFB?
So if we were to use the same UPC number or.
All right, now I don't care.
You don't want to attach, what's going on is that you don't want to attach the two phases because one is held up.
You have to wait for the right of way.
I trust you know you don't. All right, this.
Federal is not easy. But it is very valuable that, that dollars coming from other places with no local match requirement are certainly very attractive. And they're a way to get things done. It's just that they don't always get done on the timeline you hoped.
Anyway, have any other suggestions or phase two comments before we let Ms. Odenino go? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm excited to see it arrive. Let's hope it happens earlier in fall than later. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
All right. The, Paul, you missed a riveting conversation on CPACE.
I do plan to catch the tape.
Actually, I'm, I'm not sarcastic at all. It was very interesting, so. And it seemed that we need to do very little to get this thing up and rolling other than, you know, what, the time it takes to get it in front of council. But it looks like the platform and the systems are in place and Arlington's done a lot of that legwork. So just, you know, as you watch the tape, it's just. Maybe you and I talk to figure out how to move it along. There seemed to be really receptive audience here and a win-win all the way around. So figuring out a way to advance it forward might be a challenge just because of what's happening in the city. But it, it seems like something that's important and just begin to think about how we can take the next step. Doesn't look like there's any real obligation on the city's part financially in terms of setting it up. Looks like a lot of ordinances and paths and things like that, so. When you watch the tape, we can speak about it.
Absolutely. I think this is where, I know the city's environmental programs coordinator is already interested in this program. So it's great to have a resource like that, someone who's interested and knowledgeable and can help move along some of that. As you mentioned, sort of the policy and the legislative pieces or components.
They should call Tim.
Yeah, fortunately, the White House has appointed Kate Walker, who's here as an athlete, so, but I won't be assisting her if she wants.
I would expect nothing less.
Well, I will say that this is an example of a project that, that has a champion and that makes it a lot easier to move forward when you've got a staff champion at city hall advancing it and someone at the elected level moving it as well, or in this case, appointed level.
Yeah, Tim, I'm not even asking if anybody else wants to champion this one. All right, the next item on our agenda, my thing closed down here, it, I think is the retreat topic. Open here. So we put, Paul and I spoke about putting this on. Obviously, the retreat's this next meeting we're having two weeks. It was just to begin to think about here, things that we want to discuss. It's just a real brainstorming session. We did this a couple of weeks ago as it related to this city council meeting. I didn't know that those topics are going to be the same as we talked about there. A lot of the topics, I actually looked this weekend at some of the topics we brought on our list for last retreat and they haven't changed that much. At that time, we were trying to get a better sense of where this, the economic development project was heading at the George Mason campus site. I feel like we have a better idea of that, but we're still, you know, in the nasian stage of that project and, and our role in this planning commission hasn't begun in earnest yet. So I, I went this past Monday to the city council to report on our past year. And then as part of that, I said, here are some of the goals that I think we are going to focus on this year. And the number one, I think I said, is this campus site. I think it's, it's going to be a big part of what we do this year in addition to, you know, the standard business and the, the finishing of Broad and Washington and, and maybe Founder's Row, maybe. And Park and Lee has now come up and stuff like that. But I think it's really going to be focused in large measure on our role in this, in getting this properly zoned or properly indicating at least to developer where we stand on this. And I'm not sure if it's not rezoning it. There's just, there's a lot of debate and I'll let Mr. Stoddard sort of talk to some of these things. But how we can be involved, I wanted us last year, and it seemed like there was real agreement to be leaders on this thing. I feel like from all of our meetings and discussions, we are aligned as a group on this project. And just really how we can advance it and make sure, at this point, we have a better timeline than we did last year. But how we can make sure we're not the, the, the branch or the, the step in the process that slows things down so that we can be of assistance. So I think that's a big topic. And I, I don't need you to, Mr. Stoddard, to report on that now, but I want to talk about how we can be leaders on this and, and, and advance it forward. But beyond that, that's, I think, going to be, take up, what'd we say, something like 45 minutes or something of the conversation, I felt like. But beyond that, there's a lot of other topics that people have. And I want to just do a brainstorming session here, just make a quick list, and then we'll sort of sort through where we want to tack. And so we use our time wisely in two weeks.
If I could, looking at the agenda, I've brought note cards and pens and we could move the tables around and sort of start posting notes and see where there's similarity and differences. If we are going to do a little bit of room arrangement, I, I do wonder in terms of agenda, do we want to get through the other items and then perhaps close with the brainstorming?
I am very open to that. There's not much of an agenda other than you talking to us. So we would need a, I guess, a men to do that, but other than that, I'm really, I, I think that's a good idea if we're going to.
That way everyone can get up and stretch their legs as well, which, which might move the creative juices.
And the public will get restless if we do it any other way, so.
Do you think we need to go to that extent to get what we want on the agenda?
Well, I think what I had in mind for the brainstorming is handing out a couple of cards and letting each planning commissioner sort of on their own, think about what are their own top three priorities and then sharing those with the group and finding out where there is symmetry or alignment in terms of what people are thinking. So I, I don't want to throw out ideas and prejudice the group about what they might put as their top three. But if, if someone's top priority is, you know, an arts and culture district or someone else's top priority is the Greenway Downs overlay, or somebody else's top priority is getting the CPACE program through. Is everybody thinking about different things or are people thinking about the same thing? And I think that'll really impact the conversation in two weeks at the second half of the planning commission's retreat. Because it'll tell us whether the conversation next week is how do we get these four things through? Or is the conversation, how do we get to some alignment within the group about what are the real priorities?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Stoddard and I talked about this. I don't imagine this process to be more than, you know, a few minutes here. You get a couple of ideas, we just put them up on the board, line them up and then people can make sure that their ideas, as opposed to just sort of shaking your head and saying, all right, this is, that sounds good, that sounds good. Just, just, we get a better sense of, if there's a huge amount of overlap on a particular topic, then it's going to rise to the top. I really don't imagine it being much more than, you know, a few minutes.
But we do have that list from the last time, things we didn't accomplish then.
And, and it's a long list, so if you want to pick your top three, that's, that's, I have it up from last time and I'm going to pick my top three as a result. I, I thought it was a good use of like five minutes just to individually write it down and then we'll just move forward.
Are there stickers?
He said, yeah.
I have, I have, I was locked out of the city vehicle for security reasons. But I, I was able to, with Jim's help, make note cards out of colored construction paper.
Oh, really?
You just called me. I have posted.
Oh, my gosh. Cool. I was just going to say, the council always gets stickers.
Probably is.
Okay, so that sounds fine.
It's, 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 what is it, a Rube Goldberg machine? That the keys for the car are in a lockbox and the keys to the lockbox are in the file cabinet and the keys to the file cabinet are with a staff member and that staff member's already gone for the day. So there's a real, there's a real process.
It's a lot of work to get a posted note.
Is it easier when you're in your regular space or is it, is it harder because you guys have moved?
Uh, correct. We're storing, our community planning materials are all stored in the staff vehicle. It's always with us when we go, but only if we bring the car with us.
Well, you know, this is creative time, so that's good for you.
It was some good problem solving about creating.
You can put that down when you do your performance review, how I became more creative.
Efficiency.
So do we want to jump to those other agenda items?
I, I think that makes sense. So I just need a quick motion to alter the agenda to place the.
Brainstorming?
Where is it? Item?
Seven A.
Seven A.
Mm-hmm.
To go after.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Chair, I move, we defer item seven A on the agenda until the end of the meeting so that we can handle items nine and 10 and 11.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All right, any opposed? All right, unanimous. You may begin your, oh, I will remove the approval minutes. Your planning commission reports are going to come after that. So let's approve the minutes. We have two this time, January 16th. I forget why these are still on. There was some technicality. We decided to defer it, but.
There was, the person who left their comments, they did speak, but then they also wanted it verbatim in the minutes and that's why we went back to that.
Yeah, I read them for the second time and they looked the same as the first times, but. I am, I have no comments on these minutes. Anyone else have comments on the January 16th minutes?
I do and I feel bad because I had promised I was going to try to mail, email them to you and I, it got. I do and I feel bad because I had promised I was going to try to mail, email them to you and I, it got underneath paper on my desk and I never did it at home. But so in line five ninety-two.
Let me get this.
Sure, sure. I was gonna say, I was gonna try to fix it, but I'm not even sure. I know I said something about this, but this is not what I said. So if we could just remove that first sentence. And then that'll be the easiest fix. I mean, trying to rewrite it. And then on line six forty-four, I'll wait till you get there. Yeah, I didn't suggest corner offices. I suggested an additional floor of offices with a better balance of office in, I guess, for a better balance of office and retail. Because I was talking about comments we got from the EDA that they thought we should have another floor of office. And that's it.
Any other comments? All right, can I get a motion to adopt the January sixteenth minutes as amended?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And any abstentions?
I'm not ineligible to vote today.
You're not eligible?
You abstain.
I don't think he can even abstain.
He didn't even abstain.
Oh, okay.
Was it persona non grata?
Oh, then this is, this is sacred.
You want to, temporary security?
You and Paul have security issues.
You don't have full security clearance.
If you'd like to speak, you need to fill out a petition. All right, moving on to the February twentieth minutes. Any comments from the commissioners on issues? I don't know.
Sorry, I missed it.
For a very few minutes, it was a very long.
I couldn't believe it. Yeah, I saw that till ten forty-five or something.
Yep. Yeah.
Nothing on the agenda.
Nothing.
Talk about the CIP.
CIP.
In signage.
We did talk about the CIP quite a bit in signage.
Yeah, that was it.
I have no comments.
CIP.
Signs are very important.
Any, any comments from those few who attended?
I move that we accept the minutes of January twentieth, February twentieth, excuse me.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Two abstentions?
Not, we're not here.
That was easy. Now going to, oh, planning commission reports. Does anyone have any report? I will start off actually, and as I said, I went before the city council to report on our. I did fine job, I guess. But yeah, what I wanted to pass on was that the council was very appreciative of everybody's efforts and very complimentary of all the work that we're doing and the effort we put in. And I want to pass it on that they were very appreciative. And they mentioned that a lot. They said, except for that February twentieth meeting, it's been a great group. But that's all I wanted to say.
I just want to mention that Ed Salzberg, probably most of you know, he's, he's going to be speaking on the fifteenth March at the American Legion at seven o'clock. Subject is attracting retail to Falls Church, the challenges and disadvantages, or advantages, sorry. So it's being sponsored by the CBC and Tanner Hill Association. So that's the, the American Legion at four hundred North Oak, North Oak Street on the fifteenth at seven o'clock.
If I.
To your group, but and he did a really good job, right?
Yeah, Vipis he did.
If I could jump in, Jim Snyder is now staffing the EDA. And he, Jim informed me that Ed Salzberg is willing to come as part of the planning commission speaker series and talk about retail here before the group.
I mean, I'm interested, but if other people are going to be going to these other meetings and will have heard the presentation, I'm unlikely to go to that meeting, so it would be new to me. But if you've heard at Vipis already and you think this is not a, you'll certainly hear this meeting and this presentation already. So maybe it may, I may miss it.
There isn't, I was going to say there's an advantage to putting it on the PC speaker series that it is recorded and that means people at home can get the benefit of these conversations.
And our live audience.
It's no longer live. I don't believe we're live streaming from this location.
I meant people in the actual audience.
Oh, that is true. They do benefit in real time.
So how is this broadcast? It's not live, right?
Tape delay, a couple of days.
And they can bleep the app.
Is the city council's live?
No.
So nobody's live?
Correct.
For the whole year until they move back into the.
That's my understanding.
It would seem to be so easy to broadcast, really, maybe on channel sixteen, but to stream it, you know.
The idea of Facebook Live, that's certainly something we can bring back.
By the time we figure it out and vote on a procedure for it, we'll be back in our regular space.
Look, we don't need federal funding for this. We can just, we can just move fast.
But there's always a procedure that needs to be done. How much work did it take to be able to call in that we weren't able to use?
There is a real benefit to the live streaming, that there are people who aren't able to make it here on a Monday night for a lot of reasons. Keeping them informed as the events are happening so that they can provide comments, not necessarily in real time, but essentially in real time would be a benefit.
Heard of more than one person who've been watching the planning commission or the council live who didn't like something that was being said and drove down and got in just in time to speak. Yeah, so people do do it.
So are we interested in having Mr. Salzberg come before us and speak?
Who is Mr. Salzberg?
Well, he's the director of the EDA.
Yeah.
He's super important. Okay, so that sounds like
That's a go.
overwhelming support.
Unless a lot of us show up that meeting.
I mean, Andy probably won't be there.
I think we just decided we wanted to record.
One of every two in the last month. Okay, any other planning commissioner reports?
Well, we did have the EDA retreat, which was.
Which had food. Just saying.
We are planning for sustenance.
Little like steaks and pizzas.
It's the new bake shop that's going to open in the city. So it was kind of a preview apparently of their, of their product. And it was, it was quite amazing.
I didn't go to me.
Because Bob Young provided it all.
It's invite Bob to ours.
The retreat is pretty good. I thought a lot of issues I thought very thoroughly. I give them credit for having a very comprehensive look at, at issues in the city.
I went to the EDC meeting last week, which was not that exciting, but they, we got lots of updates. Sounds like Broad and Washington, they're still working on that. They've got some tweaks they're trying to work on. Park and Lee, they really want to go in front of city council where I think they will find out that it's too big and not commercial enough. But they want to hear it from the horses' mouths, so I think that's going to get scheduled. And then Founder's Row, any day now. Resubmission of the Founder's Row is interesting because they're working on a site plan. And I guess after, which I guess is basically just waiting on the theater signed lease. And then after that, they'll formally try to swap the hotel for the age restricted condos. And I pointed out in the EDC meeting that, like, we have not ever heard anything official about that swapperoo and that I thought that we probably thought that was a pretty big change. So I think they got that. I mean, the people that I guess know the differences seem to think that age restricted condos are probably fine replacement for a hotel. But I just pointed out, we had no idea, so they might throw us on the calendar or I say it's a little presumptuous to assume that we would be cool with swapping that out without having another crack at it, so.
And the last I had heard is that they proposed this months ago and the EDC basically told them no, that it wasn't
That wasn't.
A good swap, but.
In the meeting, it didn't, there wasn't much.
Maybe they've given up and pushed back on that.
Well, the EDC, I mean, no one really is weighing in, but it, the real question was why are they going after site plan if this thing is here? And I guess the, the thought from Gary was, most of the site plan won't change if you, if we allow a hotel for condo swap. And they've gotten so far into that, they just want to get that done and then go back. But anyway, the point is, like, I don't, I think that would, they're going to try to do that and then do the swap. But I made it clear, I thought it would be, I think we would be unhappy if the things kind of came to us as a site plan with condos without any kind of discussion. Because we'd be like, this is not what we.
Yeah.
Can we act on the site plan before the, before they make that change?
It's a combination where we would be doing first reading.
The site plan we would approve would still have the hotel, I think.
Yeah, if I could, so the, the applicants have submitted a revised site plan. So they had submitted a site plan last calendar year and that had received a round of staff comments. And they've revised their site plan submission under their currently approved special exception, which includes both the theater and the hotel use. The site plan is a site plan in the classic sense, that it provides for the building footprints, the landscaping, the buffers to adjoining uses. Their expectation is that when they come in for an amendment to their special exception, they'll be operating under the same building footprint. So the use will change, but the layout of the site will remain the same. So the expectation is that they can get an approval on their site plan and work out final engineering. So where do the pipes go? Where does the bus shelter really go? How many trees do we have on this frontage? Do we have the lane markings correct? Have we talked about our architectural boards and our materials? There's still quite a bit of work that has to be put into the finalization of that. The expectation then is that they could come back for a special exception amendment when they have the mechanics of their program. They would have to get a reapproval on their site plan, I think, because the use has changed. But if the traffic counts haven't changed substantially, the materials are staying mostly the same, the fiscal impacts are roughly the same. I think for a lot of reasons, you could see a way toward moving this forward with, essentially the, the site plan as approved.
I mean, maybe there's an argument. I, I see that as, why make us go through it twice? Why have a whole, a public hearing on the site plan that we know we're going to have to have and that we know is not accurate? I mean, it just seems silly to do it that way. Why not give them the time to?
These developers seem to like to do it the silly way.
They may like to do that, but they have to get our blessing.
If the question is accuracy, that's something that can be highlighted as part of the staff report with this site plan is that we could tee up for the group. This is the site plan they're bringing forward. If they amend their, as they amend their special exception application, these are the things that we would expect would, would flex.
So are they, basically, we had talked, we, we had put in the ability to do it simultaneously. And usually that meant, the way that was supposed to happen, although no one has ever taken us up on it, was that we would be doing a special exception in the site plan together, voting on it at the same time. But are we talking about us looking at a site plan and voting for it before the special exception?
We've already, we've already, the special exception's already been approved.
Well, no, but they have to amend it now.
Well, right.
Which means they have to go back through.
The special exception would also have to come through for, come through for a recommendation.
No, no, what I'm saying is, my understanding is the developer wants to get the site plan approved with the hotel still on the site plan and then move forward for whatever their reasons.
Part of what they're doing.
I think you mentioned it's to help them with financing.
Yes. They're trying to get financing lined up. They're trying to lock in pricing for their construction costs.
I don't think the public's going to find that terribly confusing, almost boring and disingenuous. And I, I don't think that's a wise way to go from a public process standpoint. I, I think it's going to create a lot of suspicion and concern on the part of a lot of the citizens who were very concerned the first time around. And despite, you know, I'm definitely in favor of the project, but I know that the folks who had concerns were only more concerned once they heard about this change. And to try to explain why we're voting on the site plan that shows a hotel when everybody now knows that that's not happening, it just seems like a very convoluted way.
Well, that was my, that was my original feedback was like, it would be weird for us because as far as I know, the only thing we know about this hotel swap is just, it's not even official. No one's ever come to us until.
It's been widely.
No, no, I know. And so that's why I was like, so it would be weird for us to be looking at that site plan with the hotel, because we'd all be like, is this.
Maybe the applicant can have, has a very convincing, you know, argument about why we should even entertain something like that, but.
Well, the key question to me is if we approve such site plan with the hotel, let's find, let's say we approve it. And then they want to amend it to change out, swap out the hotel with more, with condos. Or is it going to come back to us for a site plan improvement or approval, like a, or are you, is it going to be approved administratively? Because if, if it is something that comes back and we have to look at the, you know, the changes in the site plan and do a reapproval.
With public hearing?
With a public hearing. I'm, I'm not that upset about it. But if it's something where we're going to try to set it up that they can go in and change the site plan later and it's administratively approved by staff, then I, there's absolutely no way.
That's basically what I was saying to the EDC. Like, we're not gonna, we need some sort of a report and to weigh in on whether or not this swap fits.
That company does not have very much.
I don't think they would, I don't think.
I mean, I have, I have like ten questions I've been holding since I knew about this.
That's what I sort of like.
Well, it's just a backwards way to do it.
Well, I think, the other thing they said is that unless they can get the theater lease, all of it's moot. So I think they sort of feel like, why update the site plan with the condos instead of the hotel if we've never actually gotten the dang theater, so.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the two council members on the EDC, I think, said that.
Right. Well, but I think the thing is, I don't have a problem with going forward with approving the site plan if it has to be reapproved on that kind of amendment. To me, that is a, there's some minor things that we will approve a site plan going, oh, we'll let the staff follow it up. This is not minor. This is not administratively approved change. So if, if we go into it, it would be that we see it again and there's a new public hearing and a new vote.
It strikes me, it's almost like a form-based code. They want us to approve the.
Well, but I guess one of my, you know, one of my issues here is that we're swapping out a hotel for condos and I don't possibly see how the transportation council is saying. Because hotel users are more likely to have used a shuttle or, you know, different ways of getting public transportation. So I, it's just things like that where, don't tell me it's going to be pretty much the same. I just don't see how that's possible. I also think that we need to look at the size of this, you know, development. It's one thing to have it a large development when we had a movie theater in a hotel, but it's fairly large for us just getting a movie theater in a few retail spaces.
Well, let's see what comes forward with it. Let's see what comes, comes with the, with them, when and if.
I know.
I'm not going to hold my breath.
And then we also talked a little bit, I guess, about affordable housing, the Fields, which is the affordable housing.
Right.
By Taco Bell. They run out of funding in, I guess, like eight years or something like that. And so there's.
Got to switch over.
Well, it's not a running out of funding, it's that they are released from their obligations to maintain it as an affordable property.
So that opens a big question for what do you do with that, but.
Ellison Street.
They have a lot of, they're eligible for a lot of federal help.
And then what else? They, oh, soft opening for Target tomorrow. And then I left before they talked about the festival lighting, so.
Parks and Rec. The big thing is they're going to be working on Larry Graves Field this summer, so it'll be open by the fall. And we're getting a very good cooperation with Fairfax County. It's going to be under subcontracts again, yeah. So, yeah, that's been really good. And of course, they're going to be, so they've got another meeting this Wednesday. EDA will be meeting again.
Tomorrow.
On Tuesday. And they will be finalizing all their agenda for the next year. So that way we can bring it back to you because there's so many things that are overlapping with the planning commission and with the EDA that, you know, their, their goals, you know, a lot of, a lot of it's streetscape and doing the Park Avenue and getting a lot of that type of thing done. So it's a lot of the same things that Paul has brought to us that they're very interested in following through on. So we'll bring you back that whole list of what they're doing.
And then my only other thing I was going to say is, because I'm obsessed with this, there's a bunch of companies out there, but I read about one recently called May Mobility and they, they're developing self-driving mini shuttles. And they just raised some more money and they're looking for places to deploy this. So I reached out to them. It's probably a long shot, but basically, hey, we've got two point two square miles that we can control. If you want to throw some driverless shuttles that go back and forth between the metro stop. So they, they wrote back, I haven't. So they, they wrote back, I haven't heard back again, but, um, I don't know if it goes anywhere. I'd be interested to see if anyone on staff, 'cause to me, I know everyone laughs about it, but if you had a driverless shuttle that drove between the two metro stops down Broad Street or Park or something like that, uh, and it didn't, we get it for cheap or nothing, it would be pretty cool. Better than George.
Would be a lot, less expensive if you can remove the, the driver.
Yeah.
Those are, I mean, those, those are an expensive part of running a transit system, is that, that humans are expensive.
Humans are the worst, alright.
So, uh, Paul, just make a note, before that Founder's Row comes on our agenda, I wanna talk about it. I, I, I don't just wanna give them a spot unless I'm comfortable that-
Gary said they were gonna, didn't he say they were gonna start demoing the site in August, which I laughed out loud when he said it?
That's their goal, I think they're thinking about, uh, uh, financing and temperature and where they are in the calendar. And so they're looking for a path forward that allows them to line up their approvals for demolition, uh, late summer.
Could they pull a demo permit anytime? I mean, could they pull a demo permit?
Not without a site, uh, not without an approved site plan, they wouldn't have anything to build too.
Anyway, my point is, they are optimistic, but they've been optimistic for years.
That's fine, I just, I, I, if they're coming to us with the ho, the hotel, and that's not the intention, I'm not sure I wanna waste the time of the commission. I just wanna hear about it and what the process is and how that works. It's just not a guaranteed slot.
Yeah, I certainly heard, uh, questions I heard raised from the group. Uh, why is the site plan being considered before the SE, uh, uh, amendment goes through? Uh, does the amended SE mean a new site plan approval by the PC versus an administrative approval? And, uh, describing how things would change, uh, in the site plan as part of the use change. Um, so I think those are all certainly conversations, and we can talk about that.
And to, you know, reach out to them and say the Planning Commission needs to be a part of their process if they're making this kind of change. So, they need to put us on their agenda to explain what, what the intention is with the change.
Is Peter Battis still their point person? Who is their lead contact?
No longer Peter.
No, it's not Peter.
No, so who, who is it now?
It's the guy from-
Uh, Mill Creek is the group running the, uh, the project at this point.
Well, they're in, but they're not running it.
They're not the prime-
Nah, definitely not lead.
No, I, it seems to me that, since they're in all this process and everything, they need to pop into a meeting really soon and just do a work session with us.
Uh, certainly the fact that they're pulling-
'Cause we need to be prepped for this.
We haven't heard from them in a year, yeah, at this point.
They could appeal to their, their interest in time, in speed.
Yes.
Yeah, they try to come in without giving us time. I mean, I, like I said, I have like ten questions I've been saving ever since I heard they wanted to swap this out. And I don't see myself approving a site plan that doesn't really exist without knowing what's going to exist.
I mean, it'll just be, I guess, a vision, a public hearing.
I agree.
Terrible it could be, so I don't even wanna, right, you know?
Yeah. No, I think that's the value of a work session, is that, uh, the Planning Commission, you guys can communicate, what are your real concerns about this, uh, as a process and a product at this point?
Yeah, work session, that would be, that could be useful.
And so they can prepare in advance of that public hearing, so that you guys aren't stuck in the middle trying to explain to the public why you're taking action on a, on a project that, that you don't believe is going to be built in its current form. That's an awkward thing for you guys to describe.
Some of us may not do that.
And I think it should be conveyed to them that we may be unlikely to do it. And at, at the current time period, without better information, why would I vote for this?
Right, I think that's what's gonna be worked out at the work sessions, that you guys are gonna bring these questions.
This is not another body or commission or group that can give it to them.
I think you've gotten the message, if you convey that sentiment to them, and then, yeah, I think it looks-
Yeah, absolutely.
Sounds like, that could be helpful.
Yeah.
Uh, any other reports from commissioners before we hear from Mr. Stoddard on the director's report?
I, Mr. Chair, I don't, let me just briefly bring up something that, uh, I was thinking of. I got out the, uh, I was cleaning out my in-car filing cabinet, it's called the passenger seat, and found the, uh, the board's and commission goals for, uh, that we discussed city council retreat. And, and since that whole retreat for the city council was to try to get people working more closely together, different boards and commissions, I was wondering at some time either perhaps at the, uh, our retreat or something, but to go through and see where there's so much overlap of go, goals from other boards and commissions that we should be working together on or have contacts with, so that people are not repeating their work.
Yeah, 'cause they had, uh, every group submitted their big things, and they're all on the wall, you know? And you did, you, you saw overlap where you expected, CACT and us, and EDA and us, and EDA and CDC.
And, and, uh, Arts and Humanities, and there's just so much, and of course, Environmental Council Services. And it's just, just phenomenal. Maybe, uh, I don't know if you think that it'd be valuable to get copies of this for-
I'd like to look at it.
Yeah. But, uh, Debra, do you know if there's any copies still hanging around from the retreat?
The, the electronic copy was posted as part of the package materials for the council's work session tonight, and I can bring those, uh, in printout form for the, uh, Planning Commission at the, the part two of the retreat.
'Cause I'm, I'm looking at it and saying, okay, we've got the, you know, Planning Commission, uh, City Council, and I think the EDA, but the, I think those three groups have gotta start functioning better together. And, uh, and the crossover of goals, and I think everybody's, uh, so many of the boards and commissions right now are really into good work mode. And, uh, so I think that was the whole purpose with, uh, the vice mares wanting to, uh, do this whole process.
Your documents online.
Okay, okay. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that up and see how we wanna handle that, or put it out there.
Yeah, certainly part two of the retreat is still, uh, being worked out. Uh, but I think one of the major topics could be how the group gets its work done, and certainly partnering with other groups, uh, when you look at the backlog of items, uh, part of that is how do you build political capital and connections, so that you've got three groups trying to clamor for, for, uh, the same agenda space, uh, to move it forward versus pushing perhaps different items.
More collaboration. Anyway, that's, I just wanted to bring that forward for information, 'cause I think it's kind of important. And I hate to see all that work that went into that, and, uh, with all the boards and commissions, you know, putting their info in. And I know the council's looking at it, but I think we need to do our part and look at it also. There's just a lot of overlap.
Alright, great, uh, Mr. Stoddard, why don't you, uh, bring us up to date?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, included in your, uh, packet are a number of materials that I wanna walk through, and just, uh, as a way to keep you up to date on what's going on in and around the city. Uh, I don't know what order these were posted in, so I'll hold them up as I walk through them. Uh, first up is a, uh, article that was published in the Washington Business Journal on the city's West Falls Church project. Uh, it provides a nice overview of what's going on with the project. Uh, some of the graphics come out of the handout that are being used to, uh, publicize and market the effort. Uh, it's generally, uh, staff is perceiving this as a positive write-up, something to get the word out, uh, and to build interest in the site. I think a lot of the key items, uh, some of the key items in the write-up are the, the uniqueness of the site within the metro area. Uh, all pieces of land are unique. Uh, what makes this one special is proximity to an existing metro station that has capacity for, uh, boardings as well as parking. Uh, connectivity to, uh, I sixty-six, uh, and that plays well into the new projects that are being invested in, in terms of outside and inside the Beltway, as well as proximity to, uh, the rest of Falls Church. Uh, so there's certainly opportunity for adjacent redevelopment as well.
Paul, it's something, and I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no.
Um, something that might be good in addition to that is, uh, for all the planning commissioners to get the, uh, EDA glossy. 'Cause not everybody got to see that, that was a really, it's a nice presentation of the city that went, that went out to a lot of places. It's really, it's really nicely done.
Absolutely, and, uh, we may, uh, staff even ask you to take a couple extra copies. Uh, and if your friends or neighbors have questions about it, feel free to hand them out. Uh, I think the more information we can get out about the project, uh, the better.
Especially if your friends are large-scale developers.
But that would be helpful for everybody to see that, because that's another thing that we could be very proud of, that, that's quite, that was a really nice publication.
Yeah, a lot of work certainly went into it, uh, and it does have a lot of great information conveyed in a very concise way.
And in, in addition to that, I know, I don't know when it's coming out, but US News Report, uh, is doing a story on, uh, Mad Fox and the Distillery, about how they're working together. They interviewed both companies, and I'll keep, I'll probably find out more from Becky when that might be coming out, because that again is kind of interesting. You know, get that, get that stuff out there.
Get some beer.
Hey, you know?
Uh, before you move on to the next item, that just reminds me, sort of going back to the last item agenda, where, uh, I guess it was two weeks ago, a week ago, we met with the Campus Coordinating Committee. We had the kickoff meeting, um, and, uh, you know, a bunch of introductions and sort of understood where, what the, the timeline looked like, and it's at seven thirty in the morning on Fridays. And, uh, we're now meeting once a month, you would ask to be updated. It's meeting the next time on February, on March twenty-third, again at seven thirty in the morning. Um, and, uh, it was just a, you know, good kickoff. Uh, also, they were talking about the RFP that was gonna go out. Uh, at the last meeting, we had, uh, those who were in attendance had asked to write a letter on behalf of the Planning Commission to the council to get, including the RFP, which Melissa and, uh, Mr. Stevens worked on and got me that letter. I signed it and submitted to the council. Uh, I didn't look at the, the final RFP, did, did it get incorporated with some of those changes? Fantastic, alright, so that was, well received then. Alright, great, um, okay, that's all, they're just on the same topic.
Mm-hmm. Uh, also included in your packet is a one-page report. Uh, it's a development timeline, uh, compliments of, uh, Ms. Kiyoda-Ruzzi. Uh, one of our, uh, staff, uh, one of our planners on staff. Uh, if I could, I'll just walk through the projects, I guess from, uh, let's do it from, uh, things closest to the ground. So I guess from right to left. Uh, if you look, the timeline is generally trying to call out what are the major stages of a development project, beginning with an application, walking through staff review, council referral, boards and commissions, council action. Those are really four things that require either a special exception or a rezoning. So that's where things like, uh, Founder's Row, Broad and Washington, the West Falls Church Project, that's where they have to start the processes on step one. There are some things that get to start on step six. Those things that need, uh, simply a site plan or a site plan amendment get to start on step six. Uh, and then there are other things that are simply tenant fit-outs, and they get to start right on seven. So, different scales of projects start at different places, depending on what entitlements they need. Uh, but talking about things that are in the works, um, uh, there's the City Hall addition, uh, which many of you may know. Half of City Hall has already moved out to four hundred North Washington. Uh, the other half, the East Wing, will, will be moving out.
The people, not the Post-its.
Uh, correct, uh, well, the Post-its are in transit. The, uh, the, the East Wing is gonna be moving out, uh, I believe in the month of March. They're gonna be a, a phased move out to different pieces of four hundred North Washington or other offices. Uh, the tenant fit-out work in four hundred North Washington is continuing now for the rest of the suites that city staff will be moving into. Uh, railroad caddages, uh, site work underway. Uh, let's see, next, permit issuance and construction to follow. Uh, other projects, Inns of Virginia, as the group may remember, there was a, a variance approved, as well as a site plan, uh, for reconstruction of a, a refitted, uh, new hotel. They are, uh, the owner of that site who got those approvals is in coordination with various, uh, opportunities or options for a hotel at that location. Uh, downtown Plaza, uh, that required a site plan approval by this group. Uh, after that site plan approval, there was some pushback from, uh, nearby property owners about potential parking impacts to, uh, public parking in the area. Uh, there was one thought to come back for a site plan amendment to diminish the size of the park and thereby reduce impacts on public parking. Uh, another strategy that's being, uh, followed at this time is to try and expand parking in other areas of downtown and increase pedestrian accessibility, so that there would actually be a net increase in parking supply. That's a way to keep, uh, the integrity of the plan as the Planning Commission approves it moving forward.
And that's what the EDA pushed.
So what's the next step then? I mean, it says, those are two alternatives.
Mm-hmm.
The latter sounds better to me personally, but, uh, wha, how do we progress this forward then? 'Cause I thought we had done what we needed to do, and-
We are done.
Procedurally, you guys have taken your steps. What might help is, uh, looking at the proposal that's going forward for the EDA for, uh, spring twenty eighteen improvements for parking supply and-
So why is the city balking, we approved the site plan?
Yeah, why are we doing this?
Why is the city even balking and saying?
There was a movement of the local businesses, not just the landowners.
They complained to council?
They complained to council, the chamber complained to council, and, and, um, 'cause those parking spaces, I mean-
Expensive.
And they showed that those parking spaces are being used all the time.
Oh, surely they're being used, but, you know, what's more important, I mean, I don't know.
I think the bids that they got, though, were a lot more expensive than-
That was the other thing, they couldn't afford the bids.
So we kind of got a update at the retreat, uh, EDA retreat, and it's really been downsized and value engineered, which, you know, how I ha, you know how I hate those words. But, um, anyway, you know, we'll see what happens. They have to vote on it, and, and also, you know, there was a big question whether it has to come back to us. If it's downsized, I don't know. And Jim was, Jim was there for, so.
Yeah, when the site plan approval came through this group, uh, there were some items that were optional, uh, the fountain and the fireplace. And so if those aren't included, those were already identified in your approval as optional, so there's no need to come back. But if the footprint starts to change, uh, that becomes, I think, an issue to, to re-explore. Uh, one thing that might help, if the interest of this group is to move the plan forward as approved, it might be looking at those, uh, improvements that are being requested of, of the EDA now in terms of parking and pedestrian access, and, and issuing a letter of support, that it might be important to have a counter voice.
I think our vote of approval was a letter of support, and I don't know why, you know, I mean, I don't know how much more clear we can make it. Why did it have to be built as it was shown?
My support for the project looked warm, uh, because, one, those funds that are being used came from the sale of the Podolnick Park property, that's being used for, was used for the Rushmore Building.
Melissa Putcher, Leida.
Oh, it doesn't work.
Oh, okay.
And so to my feeling, those, those were land banking funds, and they really should go to land banking. And my other reason being is that our, our area plan for that area shows that being redeveloped. So, I mean, and I know it's, we showed doing, like, on, on our part of it, we were shown doing some different things with that property, or getting the landowners to do a redevelopment. We had, that's kind of, that is what our purp, in the area plan, that's what we wanted.
We have infill, not re-well.
If I remember, if I remember correctly, downtown is the core entertainment area within that block. One of the strategies was using, uh, infill development on some of the, uh, the sort of pad sites that might be available for a better term, but looking at sort of a green spine through the block with connections to both Broad and Park.
We also looked at that, once that land gets tied up with a newer park, then it's not part, in play for what we were looking at doing. And, so that, so I, I mean, I don't mind if other people wanted to do a letter, but, you know, in the end, I understand that that is what, you know, what people were looking to do, but I still think it, you know, it's something that we may wanna change in the future, and I really thought that, that, that money should have gone back to land banking, personally.
Yeah.
That we could, and I always, along, all along, I thought the project could have been much smaller and less expensive and still get a lot of gain, and I think it just got really big. And then, of course, then it went out and it was too expensive anyway.
Sorry, isn't it only, how many square feet is it? I mean, it's not a very big plot.
No, no, I mean in terms of cost, about materials and the, a blackboard wall, and it just kind of became-
We seem to be halfway in the city, I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah.
It'd be a shame, how much money's already been invested in the design and, and staff time? How many years has staff been working on that?
A while.
I could look up the specific numbers, it's been about a year.
Another story like a lot of other projects, they get halfway, they fizzle out, they get, people come from out of, seemingly out of left field at the last minute and throw a monkey wrench in it.
Yeah.
The council walks back from support and, and, uh, we wasted our time, and-
Gee, you haven't even been doing this for long, and you gotta call them.
I've learned quite a lot.
Well, I, I have been making comments about-
I've been working for seven years, now, I think I got it.
I've been making comments about this for several years, actually three years, when it first came up. That, that there were, we could still put some nicer area in there and some seating without spending all the land banking money.
It's, it's a touchy thing, but it's, we've already voted on it, but it's gonna, it's gonna, as I said, value engineered to death, which I am just so afraid of.
The City Hall project.
Our fu, our, value engineered, value, you know? I see it in our future.
Okay.
Yeah, look, we've debated this, uh, for years, and got our overwhelming support. I don't feel like I need to write a letter to indicate what hours and hours of recording has indicated. And our, uh, I think it was unanimous, I know Melissa was outspoken, but ultimately, I think it did get our full support. So I don't think that's a le- So I don't think that's a letter. It's unfortunate to me that it has hit a roadblock like this over a few parking spaces, but that's the process.
They wouldn't have been able to afford it anyway, so I had to read.
Well, and lesson learned is that the outreach did not do its job. And I guess it sounds like they should have gone to the Chamber of Commerce and really talked to them.
I mean, again, I mean, it's a balancing act. I mean, it's the city land, it's priorities. I mean, it's like, there's, there's parking, yeah, for private, that benefits private businesses. And then there's content land that could have been used, you know, for, for greater public good. It's a policy decision. I thought the city council initially was affording that choice.
Your light's not on either, sir.
It's not working.
His isn't working either.
Lashes. Actually, no, it's working. So anyhow, so you know, city council, I mean, that's a policy decision, but they brought before us a site plan, we endorsed it. It'd be a shame if they have to walk back from that and all that time was wasted, but.
Well, maybe it's a win-win since they can't afford it and they walk it back a little bit and put some of the parking back in. They can show that they were listening to our business people.
So there's no action item before the group tonight. Do we want to move on to the next item? Next up, Broad and Washington. Oh, I'm sorry, Mason Row, we talked about that. Broad and Washington, looking to schedule final action, second reading, April nine. Which is really just around the, just around the bend here. There may be, I think, a work session with council to talk about the voluntary concessions between now and then, but otherwise looking for final action in April. Park and Lee, this was brought up earlier. For those that aren't familiar with this application, this is a mixed-use project at the corner of Park and Lee. Predominantly fronting onto Park Street with then a side frontage onto Lee. The application is, I think, for a four or five-story building with residential condos and then live-work units on the ground floor. I think one of the things that's interesting from a conversation perspective about this project is that the proposed area for redevelopment is about a half acre in size. The last application that came in for about a half an acre was Broad and Spring. That project had a anchor commercial tenant that wanted to construct and occupy the building long-term. And they wanted to do residential condos up above. Both of those things are products that the city has expressed an interest in for several projects now, getting into residential condo again and getting commercial anchor tenants. I think one of the questions, and this project is a good one to have this conversation on, is what does it take to get a half-acre project completed in the city? Can you meet that threshold that, that often is ascribed to the special exception criteria on a half acre? And what does that look like?
Yeah, and there was a previous submission for this property that failed to move forward. And we, we, yeah, well.
There were two, I think.
Well, there was never an application paid.
But we had a work session. And, and really their, their problem was to park it at even a minimal level. I mean, we've been pretty open about, you know, putting less parking in where, where it's shown that we need less parking. And I think that that's probably, I imagine, when you put more residential in, your parking becomes your bigger problem.
Well, I think that's another question about the half-acre size, that when you've got a half acre, you don't have the same sort of footprint to work with in terms of efficiency of, of parking aisles and layouts and things like that.
It's very difficult in that size.
A project where Smash Burgers was and now the Ramen Place was, another very small half-acre. And we weren't able to make that work either. So you're right. So maybe that is something.
Well, and I think, in the EDC meeting, we talked about part of the challenge is the larger sites that can actually sort of earn the special exception in all the ways that they're special and therefore make them valuable to the owner and then the developer aren't necessarily scale, scalable to that size. So it, it seems like what you see is these developers are struggling to make something profitable enough for them to go after based on the land value that the owner thinks they get. So one of the questions in the EDC meeting was, you know, if this thing fails, is that going to potentially reset expectation? Like, hey, if you own a half-acre site all by itself, you can, you can get a good price for it, but it's probably not gonna be as valuable, the land, as if you were bundled up with a four-acre site or something like that. And could that get developers thinking? Cause like this thing on Lee and Park, I mean, they could do office condos on the ground floor and residential condos up top. And I think technically that would be enough commercial and they wouldn't make as much money, but, I mean, it's, you know, I think it could get approved. And so it's some, part of it is sort of setting the right expectations, I think, for the market for what those sites can achieve.
I wonder if it's partly the size, how many floors they want to.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's like anything, the developers want to make, make money and the bigger it is, the more they can make. But I, I think, you know, I don't, it was never totally clear to me why Spring and Broad failed. So this one's clear, cause the ground floor is, is very vaguely commercial. I mean, it's basically residential ground floor. And I think it'd be, you know, we'd have to agree to be taking commercial land making it residential, you know. Historically, I haven't had a interest in doing so. But certainly, I think, parking-wise and otherwise, you could bake the ground floor office condos. And you could rent them to doctors and lawyers and stuff. And you wouldn't make as much money as, as you would if they're just more residential, but it's doable.
Does this have a date on the council's agenda?
Not yet. Staff has been working to identify a, a work session date for the project. I think part of the conversation with these projects is that once someone has paid an application fee, what's the best way to move them forward to their first work session with council? That if there is a message that needs to be heard, that perhaps the landowner has too big a, a sales price in mind for the land or the programming isn't right or the architecture is off-base, how quickly can that message be, be conveyed from the full council? So that the applicant really knows what they're up against.
Alright, this is just like something on the horizon. If it hasn't even gone through the first reading or not even on their agenda, this is.
It's not on their agenda yet, no.
It seems like they're trying to get it on there maybe once things free up from Broad and Washington.
Right now, Broad and Washington is the priority to move through the council agenda.
That's April ninth, so it's. Right, so it could be maybe something in the months.
And then the last project on the sheet, the library expansion, this is something that will need variance, site plan approval as well as at least one waiver for parking. And so at the staff level, we are thinking about architecture, layout, connectivity to adjoining uses, transportation demand management and a parking management plan for the site. That this is, this library is the gateway to the civic campus along the Park Avenue, Great Streets idea. So how does the design and architecture of the library relate to the park across the street? How does it relate to the intersection of Park and Virginia? Can we tighten all that up? So that this really becomes one experience going to the library or the park or walking down the street to City Hall. And so obviously, the library is one part of that, but when we bring the site plan forward, I think that's one of the things planning staff will be looking at is the purpose of a site plan is connectivity. So how does this relate to the context of Park Avenue and municipal campus? Also in your packet was a relatively long document.
Can you get a too-longed-in-read on that?
I can tell you the takeaway.
Can you read page thirty? There's the conclusion.
I was at the, the COG, the Council of Government's Planning Directors Meeting, last month, February meeting. And one of the things that came up was the Transportation and Land Use Grants Program. The city has benefited from this multiple times, even in the time that I've been here. There was a corridor study done for South Washington Street. There was a TDM report done. How do you do transit-oriented development beyond the quarter-mile, the typical reach from a station? Then there was also the transportation study for the West Falls Church area itself. That was the most recent project completed. I was reaching out to the, to the program operators, asking if anyone had started looking at parking numbers or trip generation numbers for projects that are within the Beltway or inside regional activity centers. The reason I ask those two specific questions are those things, those are things that can be stumbling blocks for projects. What staff has found in touring projects after they're constructing, constructed is that the parking is substantially less utilized than you would think when it goes through the approval process. There can be entire floors of parking that's empty. And at forty to fifty thousand dollars a space, that is a very expensive investment in something that's not getting used. So when we talk about other contributions that could be made, either to the parks or open space or schools or other things that are of community value, could that money be invested in another way than parking spaces that don't get used? The other issue is traffic impacts. There's always a concern about traffic impacts on residential neighborhoods, on the main streets. What we found with the North Gate project was that trip counts were forty percent below what was anticipated during the approval process. So part of that is a function of how parking generation and trip generation counts got created by the industry. And so I was asking about, could the TLC study be, be used to, to study those things and come up with perhaps new guidance for regional activity centers? Fairfax County beat me to the punch in twenty sixteen. They contracted with Nelson Nygaard through this program to do exactly that kind of study. What are the trip counts and what are the parking counts? And what they found is exactly what I would have hypothesized, that parking is substantially less utilized than projected as well as trip count. So one of the things I'm reaching out to the COG group about is, could we go in for a grant application to take this study to the next level and ask them to come up with some zoning text amendments to our own regulations? That the city updated its commercial parking regulations. It's now one for, I believe, four fifty for commercial uses. Could those, could suggested numbers be proposed in zoning text amendments prepared for us by outside resources? Especially when looking at the plan for the West Falls Church Project to occupy a lot of space and time on agendas and staff resources. Bringing in external resources is a great way to move these kinds of things forward.
So I have a question. Presumably, the, when you're proposing a development, the math that goes into projecting the parking and the trips is based on certain parameters. When they did this analysis, did they figure out which, which of those parameters are wrong, like?
Well, there's the zoning ordinance. I mean, most jurisdictions have a zoning ordinance that requires a certain amount of parking. In some cases, those are way out of date.
Well, I guess that's my question. There's the zoning ordinance, but we also do traffic studies and all these things beforehand. And it sounds like it's also coming in lower than those. So that would suggest that whatever those models are based on are wrong. But if you're gonna go analyze it, you should be able to tell where you're wrong, right?
Yeah, so there's, there are, yeah, so there are many factors generally for residential parking. It's factored on the number of bedrooms in a unit. That's how the city zoning ordinance works. Is that for an efficiency or a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, so many spaces have to be ascribed per unit, provided per unit. And what the study found is that that correlation does not rise as steeply as projected. Arlington, I think, has moved to a study where, a standard where I think they're looking for even less than one space per unit. And I know that can be a shock to a lot of people the first time they hear that. Some of this is bringing to light data that's, that's for situations that are already going inside, going on inside the city. The census makes available data about vehicle availability by households. Within the city, when you look at owner-occupied units, which is generally the people making comments on projects, two-thirds of those households have two or more vehicles. When you look at renter-occupied households, which are generally the things, being the discussion of approval, two-thirds of them have one or fewer vehicles. So there's a bit of a mismatch between who's making comments and whose projects are getting approved in terms of vehicle usage. And I think that's. And it will trend downward.
And I'm, yeah, I'm, as you guys know, I'm a freak about this. Anything being planned today is gonna be so overparked in ten years. It's crazy. I don't know if you guys get the American Planning Association's email, but their whole thing was on this big report about autonomous vehicles. One of the big things they pointed out is they're gonna need less parking, so.
And the other article that, no more parking projects.
Yeah, so.
Well, and this, and this study also specifically said that it was location made a big difference, that those that were near transit and walkability sidewalks and, and biking, like we, our entire city is along a bike trail and many smaller bike trails. And, and, and so they were saying in those, in those locations, they needed even less parking than what the average came out as.
Yeah, urban areas generally have, that, that, urban areas generally have more walking, even if they don't have close proximity to transit, that when things are within reach of an easy walk, like a Harris Teeter, Harris Teeter or restaurants or, that also means your friends and social engagements are, are closer.
And what I, what I'm, to get real deep on this, what I'm curious about is, so if you go on a time machine twenty years from now, when, you know, when you propose to build that big mixed-use development, you don't need to build nearly as much parking, how does the city position itself so that the developer isn't the one getting all of that windfall? Like, can we get more public use? Cause you don't have, you know, like, sure, the developer can share in that windfall, but it would be great if the city's positioned to have other demands that can be met in the develop, from the developer.
One of Fairfax's takeaways from this was it ultimately culminated just recently in the county updating our ordinance to give both at the staff level administratively and the board supervisors the ability to reduce parking much more easily and more dramatically than they did in the past. It's provided some data so that when, so an applicant can ask for parking reduction and get, and get a more significant reduction more easily than they could in the past. In the past, it was very limited and somewhat difficult to get parking reduction. And so that was part of the figure out. And so, you know, now there are tools in place.
Yeah, I just think it's, it's, in the future, it's the way the city will get more open space. Cause you'll say, yeah, you don't need to have parking. Give us half the land, cause we wanna put a park in there.
One of the ways you might be able to take advantage of some of these resources that are already there is that, for example, on a three oh one West Broad or a Spectrum or a North Gate, if the residential parking requirements were reduced, that could mean that under zoning regulations, they are oversubscribed on parking and they could perhaps lease it out to the next development. So the next development maybe doesn't have to dig so deep.
Well, let me, let me just chime in on three oh one. They nailed it. It's like perfect. Whatever that number is, is just right. It's at ninety-eight percent occupancy. And it's like, you gotta pay for parking. It's not cheap either. But it is at about ninety-eight percent parked on, on the residential. It is just right. You can find a spot, but it's, you gotta look for it.
And for the grocery store too, it's definitely like.
So that number is good for that location. It's, it should, I mean, should be some guidance for insight in Broad and Washington. It's right.
Yeah, well, like, and where Spectrum's retail side got it wrong, cause they've got like a floor that's empty most of the time. And people complain about the parking, the spots being small, but I, I tell people, go down one more level and you can basically park diagonal across three spots if you feel like it. And then you've got all the parking room you want.
And well, and we fixed the dimensions in the polls in the regulations recently.
Just don't go downstairs.
And then over, tax analysts too, you know, they've got a whole subterranean, seven floor down there underground that's not.
So, so this was a study for Fairfax County. Susan Bell, who's worked on a lot of things for the city, also works in Arlington County. And she took through a parking amendment on the Arlington County side of the line. So it might be worthwhile having these groups come in and talk about, you know, what's Arlington County doing, what's Fairfax County doing? Shouldn't something like a false church that's in the middle of the two be moving its parking standards as well?
Now, that was a huge discussion at the EDA retreat also, about the parking. And it all started out with, you know, negotiating with Kaiser and getting a better deal over there because of the insight project going in and the need for parking, you know, for the restaurants over there that are there, that are gonna remain there and not cutting them off. But that was the whole thing of, of whether there should be a parking study. I mentioned that Susan Bell did do the one for us, but I guess that wasn't a total parking study or something. I thought it was pretty darn good.
Well, there was work done and that culminated in a commercial update.
Yeah, commercial update. And, but anyway, that's, that was a big part of the discussion as far as parking goes. Possible parking apps, you know, for available parking and advertising, whether it's parking, more parking and things along that line. So again, that's a major crossroad.
Well, I, you know, the Planning Commission has been talking about changing the regulations for about seven years. It's on my rotating list that I keep where I keep saying, we talked about it this year, this year and this year. And along with a bunch of other code changes we've talked about, like Ringway Downs forever. So we've talked and talked about it. I think we need to start to figure out, how do we get to the next level of actually making some, a move?
So that's what I was thinking about talking about in part two of the retreat, so.
Right. And so, you know, I think it's a big concern all over and with CACT and with EDA. So it's a common concern.
Which leads us right into our quick brainstorming. It's, it's getting late, so.
It must be done at ten thirty.
One more item as a reminder, the ribbon cutting on the Target is happening tomorrow evening.
It said not, we didn't have the RSVP and then it, I saw something else as RSVP.
I RSVP'd.
No, not until about six.
The ribbon cut is six ten is what they said.
Do you know what it means when it's?
Six ten now.
What's the private shop?
Well, I RSVP'd. Well, I don't know, but I RSVP'd and he sent an email back and said, I'm so glad you're coming. The ribbon cut is at six ten, so. I got that from the Target guy.
No, I, I'm RSVP'd. I didn't get anything back.
He was traveling. He wrote back to me eventually. He said I could bring my kids.
Yeah, oh, I'm bringing my kids. That, that's why I have. Yeah, oh, I'm bringing my kids, that, that's why I have.
But so, it starts at five, do we know what that means? Like, you can walk.
I think the doors open at five and you can start looking around, but the actual ribbon cut is six ten.
I've seen a Target before.
Well, this is, this is a different Target.
This is false church start.
Bring your kids and you'll have plenty to do, but.
I will be.
Yeah, so, but, I don't know, I, I probably won't get there until five thirty, cause I have to come from Old Town obviously, so I have a lot of work to do.
But from what I've heard, there's a lot of out the community outreach coming from them, a lot of cooperation with a lot of things that's going on. Again, you know, we kept wanting that from Harris Teeter, of course, that's so corporate, they didn't get anything going.
Well, they did okay, they opened up and people went soon.
The worst seemed to got out on that.
Yeah, we're good.
But they really seem to be very community oriented and fantastic.
Well, it's because we're fantastic. All right, I'm ready to move to the next item.
Yep.
So, what I've got, and I'll go ahead and grab our, some note cards. So, I'm gonna go grab those and then hand those around while I talk about sort of what I had in mind for the exercise.
But if he made them himself, I thought it'd be nice.
Gotta use them.
Gotta use them.
Yelling out, talking ready.
Think how much time it took him to figure out, he couldn't get a car key.
Well, we, we opened drawers and we looked in desks and we found about four or five keys, but we couldn't find any of the locks they opened, so.
He could've called me, I'm a retired teacher, I've got lots of stuff.
All right, so in terms of trying to prioritize the conversation next week, I think what might be helpful is to think about what are the shared priorities of the group? I think a top three exercise is probably the right way to go. And since this isn't an official action of the planning commission, I think all the appointed members, even if they haven't taken their oaths, can participate. So, there are.
I'm trying to steal stuff from your list.
Well, there is.
So, there, I'm gonna send around three cards, maybe I'll try to send the lively colors around or the, the spring colors in the hopes of nice weather. So, I'll send these around along with a couple of pens. If everyone would, please take one card of each color and send them around to your neighbor.
Is there a retreat next week?
Yes.
Instead of our normal meetings.
Two weeks, sorry.
Here.
It's gonna be here. I think the, the current plan is to order pizza from downstairs. It's a, it's a communal eating option, which is a nice way to bring the group together. And also, since Deborah will be placing the order, there will be no fighting about toppings, she'll just make the decision. It will be in two weeks.
Fryball, the one, the fryball one, that's okay.
Deborah, I'm going home.
It will be in two weeks' time during the more, normal meeting day, but the meeting will be earlier than usual, starting at six PM.
One.
One of each color.
Of these nicely handmade ones.
So, on these cards, and we're gonna share them after everybody has a chance to, to write down their ideas.
One thing on each card?
One thing on each card.
Just hold on one second.
One thing on each card, priorities for the year. And, and again, the intent here is to give everyone free space independently to think about what's most important for the planning commission? And then to learn where there are shared desires.
The colors meaning nothing in this case.
Colors mean nothing.
And these are like general planning topics, like things about the commission in general, I mean, what are these?
I assume this is our planning side of our agenda as opposed to subdivisions and stuff.
I wanna do more subdivision.
I wanna do more pipe steps. I wanna do pipe steps.
The intent here would be to turn this.
We should address that, can we does that?
The intent will be to turn this into a work plan for the commission for either the following year or year and a half. So, after these ideas are collected, assuming there's some commonality among these things, staff will bring back to you in two weeks, a draft schedule of how these things might progress. About what could happen in which quarter and where different groups are aligned with you all in terms of where is their commonality of interest? And where could these things get some real political oomph to get over the hill?
Not conceptual, legislative.
They, legislative, but they could also be capital projects that if these are new initiatives that, that you wanted to produce, whether that's more holiday lighting in downtown? Or if you wanted to see Festival Street or a pilot project for a Ciclovia, close the street to bicycle traffic, to everything but bicycle traffic.
No bikes allowed.
No bikes, we're gonna amend the city code to specifically disallow bikes. They don't use enough energy or pollute enough. So, think about legislative items or pilot projects you'd like to see rolled out or capital projects that you really think are important to, to move forward. And I guess I'll give everybody no more than five minutes, but when I see pens dropping, I think that'll be the signal. I don't wanna ruin their paint, so I think maybe I'll use that piece of paper.
So, we're gonna turn them into you?
Uh, no, hold on to them.
Hold on to them, okay. Oh, here, we can send pens back.
That will help with the budget, thank you.
I think you overcounted the number of planning commissioners.
I counted the number of people.
You found that many pens because we had so.
We had to purge. Couldn't bring over more than four boxes. Don't worry about spelling. You get to, you get to describe it yourself, so you only have to be able to read it. That is part of the challenge of the exercise.
At least we didn't have to do the bonefish, did you ever do that?
The, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Lots of different exercises.
There's so many of them.
I got a, the, that, Great Meetings, Great Results is a wonderful book.
I have one like that, but it's like the hand, little hand guide book. It's like tiny, you just open it up and you need to find this and then you pick, oh, here's your exercise.
The driest book I've read is the Public Participation Handbook, which is a wonderful resource, but holy cow, getting through it, you gotta be committed.
I work for a co, association where we were very committed to trying new ways of communicating. We did the paddles, where you could only say yes, no.
Oh, yeah, the reds and greens?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there, there's, well, there's a.
Oh, God.
I have tried it many times and I've never gotten a group to bite. That's thumbs for a level of consensus?
Oh, yeah.
That if you can get everyone to sideways or better, keep going. Don't wait for everyone to be thumbs up. If you can get everyone to accept it, just.
Move on.
Keep going, how important is this?
We just did the use, we were doing yes, no to brainstorm for a final list of, of goals.
Yep, there's also fingers, one, two, three. I do like the thumbs down. I do that at meetings and people seem to understand. They're like, so how does everyone feel about this? And I go like this and they're like, huh, work needs to be done and then we can talk about that.
Oh, I don't.
All right, so I'm seeing pen down, pen down, pen down, still working, still working. Mostly pen down. Oh! It's, it's not apples to apples, you can still put in all your options. I don't know if people are familiar. So, I think what I'd like to do is sort of ask the groups sort of one at a time for people to share their ideas. And then I'll take the card and post it and as I hear similar ideas, I'll post them together. Do we want to maybe, let's give benefit to, to let the new guy go last, well, the returning guy go last. Let's start over, you're, you're no longer the most junior member.
That's right, that's good.
Oh! Yeah, maybe I'll start this sheet here, it's, fewer people have their backs to it.
Yeah.
All right, some of mine are more general than others, but I'm starting very specifically. I mean, sidewalks is something that's priority for me. And more specifically removing utility poles from the middle of sidewalks. It's embarrassing how terrible some of our district network is in town. There are some neighborhoods where it's, except where it's okay, but there are others where it's atrocious. So, keep on going.
Uh, yeah, well, I'm gonna post that one, but keep on going.
Just, I mean, I, I tried to capture, I mean, there's many, many zoning ordinance updates slash modernization that's probably necessary. Our ordinance is old and is sorely in need of updates. And Greenway Downs thing is, is one of many things that could be upgraded and that hasn't happened.
Nope.
And then a bigger picture theme, I think, to all of this, and we kinda were hitting at it today, since it's been a sort of a more informal meeting. But just in general, making the commission more action oriented. And we spent a lot of time talking about a lot of very good and noble and great things that should happen in the city. But how do we advance the agenda to get results? As opposed to talking about things for hours every couple of weeks over years. But actually then, when it gets out of our hands, council just says forget it. I mean, obviously, we know we're an advisory body and we make recommendations and council is council. But there seems to be sometimes a disconnect. I mean, a lot of folks in this room have no folks on council and vice versa, but somehow there seems to be disconnect where things just fall apart. And I don't know where, that's a big picture thing, that's good, I think it's a good retreat topic, so I kind of threw that out there.
All right, so the first one we talked about was sidewalks, removing utility poles, generally walkability.
Right.
Since I'm using Scotch tape, I won't have a lot of ability to replace these things. Are there other people who talked about sidewalks, walkability?
Of course, I put something else on.
Where did we land on that? So, maybe you wanna talk about what you have?
I've got the walkability parking slash, you know, just, you know, I'm.
Mows for mobility.
Yeah, something or other like that.
Different, maybe I could ask.
Oh, by the way, they're, they're thinking of really coming down on Vito's.
Right, so you've got both walkability and parking. Do you wanna talk about how those are related?
No, I like walkability, I mean, sidewalks are so important, but, you know, our whole inner city transportation mode of transportation.
It's autonomous.
Were there other thoughts about walkability and?
It's gonna be autonomous.
Real briefly on the polls.
I'm all for that.
There's legislation that's just about ready to pass that's unfortunately, it's giving Dominion all this windfall, but they have to use it to spend on certain things. And one of the things that they have to spend money on is undergrounding utilities. So, that's kind of, it's something we should pay attention to and see if there's some way we can grab.
Like accelerate it for us, yeah.
Yeah, we do, I know we have a set aside as part of the license agreement, but if this is an expansion of that, that would be wonderful. Yeah, other thoughts about, did other people write things down about walkability sidewalks?
I didn't, but I think it's a good topic.
Hearing none. Your second idea.
It was very broad, I mean, it was just general like some updates and modernization, I mean, it captures Greenway Downs, it captures, you know, many aspects of the code that.
I've got something, I've got a pink slip, I've got.
Oh, my.
Low hanging fruit, transportation, uh, transition zones, Greenway Downs and paper streets.
Yeah.
I mean, how often do we talk about them?
Well, every month.
Design and implement zoning overlay district for Greenway Downs.
What color was it on? Ah, green.
So, I have it too.
And I sort of have it a different way, I mean, a different.
I put Greenway Downs first, but then I added, I also had paper sheets and pad site change, something we talked about is like making pad sites have to be approved.
Mm-hmm.
And remove T one, which, or at least talk about what T one really is.
And T transition zones give us somewhat much trouble.
They do, they should be one or the other, we make.
I mean, I'm sorry, they, I mean, people come in with that transition.
Similar requirement, the commercial buildings are greater than one story.
Yeah, that's the pad site thing I have too.
Yeah, so that exists in B two, but not in the other B.
I thought we had a two story rule.
What?
I thought we had a two story.
I don't think so, we talked about doing. Yeah, oh, in T two.
In B two.
In B two, yeah.
In B two is a two story.
But in B one and B three, there's no such.
Right, that's what we were saying, expand it to all of them, because we really don't want a RIDE to come in if that's not where we want a RIDE.
And particularly looking at that RIDE over there, yeah.
Any other thoughts for the people wrote down about zoning ordinance amendments or overlays? No. Brett?
It hasn't worked the big, big picture one, just making, trying to, how do we advance our agenda to get results?
Advancing agenda, so sort of how the, the commission goes about its business.
Council work session.
She'll all run for city council.
Well, maybe we do more lobbying behind the scenes, I don't know what it is, but I mean, we're supposed to be one of the more, you know.
Did other people write about?
I see.
Business of the group?
I see the three groups.
Yeah.
Council, planning commission, and EDA, which we really. And I know, I know Russ has come from the idea of leadership.
Literally, in a given year, we spend a third of our work sessions on budget financial stuff, then we finally get it done and it's summer. And then the council doesn't wanna do any big work session changes in the summer because people are gone. So, then we're back to the fall. And then we have a narrow window in the fall before Thanksgiving and then they don't wanna do any big changes from Thanksgiving through Christmas and then it's time to do the budget.
There is a planning strategy that we've followed for the comp plan updates that you kick it off after the budget gets adopted in April, but before everyone leaves for the summer. You do all your staff work, then you get to your boards of commissions after everyone's back from summer, but before they leave for Thanksgiving. And then you can do your staff work over the holidays, cause what else would you be doing?
And try to get in before the budget takes over.
And then you get your action in, in January and you hope it doesn't get scheduled for February, cause then you're really pushing.
You know, another thing that.
I mean, that, that makes it very difficult and that's our cycle. But we, we have very narrow windows to get things on there.
But there's no, you know, since the city council and planning commission meet on the same nights.
Well, that's another thing we're talking about.
It's a big problem where there's no, you can't have liaison stuff going on and you can't have groups, you know, whenever we do have a group talk, it's not any fun.
We have gotten some traction around this conversation about rescheduling the way the council does their work. So, looking at a different schedule for them that would enter, they have the same number of meetings, but they have different topics that they discuss at each meeting and that would allow.
This is good for the retreat, we've talked about this already.
Okay.
I wanna get topics and we'll move tomorrow.
All right.
It's a good one, though, just cause if it got one thing, I like it.
My, my big goal is, is area plans, we really need to get more done, because some of them are old enough now, they need to be redone.
They are.
Or at least reviewed, I should say.
So, let me.
So, whatever our resources are, I think getting area plans done is very important.
I just broke a card rule, you never start in the middle, so we'll see if that comes back to bite me. You always start in the upper left, no matter what you do.
And you still have room for a couple more things there.
All right, so.
That's why we're giving you more practice.
And then, Russ, you piled on, did you have, did you wanna amend or, or add to?
No, I mean, I think we need to really focus on like the campus one, cause I think that's the focus, but.
Yeah, we, we're always the cart before the horse.
Yeah.
So, you've got.
We can't keep up.
We need the horse first.
Yeah, it's the one I wrote.
And whatever.
Oh, and here's another one.
That has to be a part of our.
Yeah.
It's our number one priority, yeah, that's why I wrote it. Yep. So, Tim, development entitlements for campus site, thirty-four acres, including adoption of small area plan.
Yeah, I think that's.
He writes in full sentences.
Did anybody else have anything related to the small area plans or West Falls Church?
I'll go in with that one.
Okay, but you've already spent your cards in other.
I've got one left that I can't cross it out.
You missed your core.
I did not.
She just keeps changing her mind what's on it.
I don't play by rules.
Okay, so this is my big one, parking, review and update of all parking.
I got that on mine too.
But, but I just wanna say, I'm not just talking about the number of spaces, I think we need to look at it holistically.
Yep.
We're looking, look at our spaces, our tow in issues, our development and new tech. So, that we need to, we need to look at it in a five, ten, and twenty year kind of vision of what parking should be. Because we are using tech and it's gotten down to a point now where you don't even need anything on the ground except for a, a painted space and a smartphone, you know? It's like, we talked about that before, the beach parking at Cape May.
Right, the app.
It's, it's basically the app says you're in space fifty-six, even though there's no fifty-six there. And you just get your parking on the app and move on.
That's come up constantly at the EDA and I've got parking on my, one of those up there.
Mm-hmm.
See?
Yeah, I just.
You can just draw a little arrow.
Very risky.
You're doing okay.
There we go, I'm gonna, I'm gonna connect them.
When you put the tape on, don't push too hard, just lightly apply.
You go all the way.
It's, it's my standard, like, if we could come up with a city sponsored paid parking thing that allowed parking on private spots. This whole idea like, if I'm in the reading room and I got ten spaces, I only ever use two of them, could I sell eight of them via some system that the city has set up? Use the technology.
That's what I mentioned, that's the panda parking, so those people sell their private spots for zoo parking and you use the panda parking app to get them.
This card was this one or the whole time?
I don't want it to go unsubscribe, this was the city sponsored paid public parking.
That's it.
So, who gave me this one, right size parking ratios, traffic. Ah, do you wanna talk a little bit more about that?
It's the, it's exactly what Russ was talking about, parking.
Okay.
And then I just put traffic in there, your, your comments and the, what's going on with the new models.
Yeah. Melissa, are you out of cards?
I'm out of cards.
I got one.
Let's work our way over.
Increase in environmental requirements, so we can increase the lead standard.
You got it, okay, bring out your, bring out your ace.
I know, I know you got one up, Tim, I'm sorry, it came to me first, I wasn't, I know it's yours.
Come on, trumpet.
Being accused of being so thorough, mine says update chapter five of the comprehensive plan, which is.
That's cause he knows.
Exactly.
Who, who on this commission hasn't memorized the chapter titles?
Guilty.
You tend to memorize the chapters you care about the most. You tend to memorize the chapters you care about the most.
I don't know what we've ever finished and what we haven't anymore. I mean.
You could go and look.
After 18 years of this.
We have a target opening up tomorrow.
When you go on the page, the stuff that is landscape is new, the stuff that is portrait is old. That's all I know.
Well, yeah, if it's in a font and color scheme from the 80s, then you know where it came from.
Yeah, you just, I opened it up, oh, this is an old one.
So, Russ, you talked a lot about sort of lead, well, you talked about lead specifically.
It's just shorthand, no, it's just that we, at one point, said we require silver, and I just think that, you know, I, really, it's just basic. I think we need to be much more aggressive in our requirements on environmental issues, and.
And that will minimize down the road, having to, I mean, we got lead silver, or lead gold for the insight, but that was only because all of the groups had to come in later and say we wanted this. I think your point is, I agree with it, if it's there in the beginning, the expectation's a step, you don't have to take all that time.
When we did silver, it was a while ago, and it was certainly not at the forefront of lead, but it was just when the people were not as, hadn't embraced that as being so important, and now I think it's time to up our standard in the city.
Not only that, I think we had a big push on a lot of stuff, and we don't, aren't even hearing it anymore, you know, rooftop, you know, the green roofs and stuff, and we did a whole lot, and then it just kind of disappeared. It was a, you know, lots of it was coming in, and then we're not even hearing about it anymore.
Well, and I wonder if sometimes people do it but don't necessarily celebrate it, because they're just used to doing it now.
But it's not coming in on projects anymore, either.
Well, there are also not many projects coming in, that the same projects have been sort of occupying the conversational space for several years.
Yeah, that's because I've been around for a while, but that's okay. I love it.
Uh, moving around the circle.
To let everybody.
Everybody have their turn.
I know, but it's like.
Okay, I've got.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
What?
Whoa, we're going around the circle here.
This is just my standard one, I would love for us to be a leader in autonomous vehicle planning.
That's my parking tech.
It's a little bit parking, but it's public transit, it's environmental.
Well, put it on the same sign on the board.
Well, no, I don't really care. It's never gonna happen, but.
What?
I'm gonna stay in the planning commission until it happens.
Alright.
lifer.
Now can I?
Yes, please.
Well, I had affordable housing down, but.
You scratched it out, you can't say that.
I know, but now I've got it campus, but you know, working for more affordable housing.
Well, wait, wait, okay.
What?
Well.
You gotta pick one.
Don't be condescending.
I don't mean condescending.
Okay, affordable housing, right there.
Now you want it to go back to affordable housing. So, Rob, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Well, I was thinking of how I could get that in, you know, and that's why I changed it to campus, because that's our next area. So, yeah, I've got affordable housing right there.
Rob, do you want to talk a little bit more about what you were thinking about affordable housing?
It's a crisis that's getting worse before it gets better. I don't think we're taking it seriously.
One of the things, so I, the reason I was delayed coming here this evening was that I was working with the council on their work plan, and when they talk about affordability, this came out during the retreat, that there are a lot of different avenues you can go, that there is senior affordability for people on fixed incomes, there is low-income affordability, or new household affordability, that how do you get a start here in the city? There are people who have been in the city a long time, and they're sitting on a pile of equity, but then they're also looking at a giant tax bill. So, there's also workforce housing, so there are affordable housing requirements up to 60, or maybe even 80% AMI. Are people talking about affordable housing for 100% AMI? Is there a gap being created between what's being acquired and what is being offered by the market?
Right, that's the problem we're having even now with the Housing Commission, getting what, you know, what they need rather than what the developers are willing to offer.
Well, in the EDC meeting Jim pointed out, like, we have a long recent history of going for units in new mixed-use, if you did go for money instead, and then went to someplace like the Fields, or one of those places, you might get a lot more benefit about this. It's always gonna be renovating, rehabbing existing, old stock is always gonna be way more efficient than getting some units and brand new plants and building. But I think you're, I were totally screwed, because in addition to the Fields, like Merrill House, they've talked about redeveloping, that's gonna not be affordable.
And that's not even considered affordable now.
Right, but it's like, de facto affordable now, but if it redevelops, it won't be, so, and that certainly will be in that year timeframe, so I, you know, I think we're a decade.
But it's way overdue crisis.
But it's gonna be expensive as well.
May I add a comment about the parking?
Yeah.
Both of my parents need ADA parking spaces when they go to pick up their drugs at CVS, and oftentimes they'll have to go home and come back for another time because the ADA spaces are taken. So I think we need to consider maybe more spaces for the aging community, or.
One of the things that I've been in conversation with, and we need to find a full funding mechanism for this, but someone who you may have heard of, Lisa Sturdevent, who is an expert in demographics in the region, we've talked about bringing her in as a consultant to try and update the demographics chapter in the city, that the city's demographics chapter was last updated in 2005. A lot of things have changed. And so, there's a need to understand what are the demographic groups that exist in the city, who's moving in, and you can use that information for a lot of different projections for facility needs, whether it's parking and transportation, or school facilities, or park users. It can tell you a lot of things about your community. It can also help you market for retail in terms of where your spending dollar is gonna be. So, demographics is really foundational to a lot of the things that the Planning Commission would consider and discuss. Did we get to everybody's cards?
Yeah.
The last one you said, because I've been out of practice, it's just really about regional cohesion, I don't really know what this means other than we have the biggest American experiment in redevelopment happening this way. We have the mosaic, we have other things happening in the region. We may be doing a better job at this, but I don't know. Doesn't seem to be something that the city has done very well.
We went and had a meeting with Vienna, which was interesting.
That was rather useless.
Always interesting.
Well, they were learning from us. I, I talked to them at the staff level, and I know that their planning commission was very interested that, you know, they're looking at proposals now for substantially less density along their Main Street, Maple Avenue, and so they're very impressed with the work being done in Falls Church, and a lot of other places are as well.
And then for what it's worth, when I, when we were trying to get the Mount Dale thing approved, I went and spoke to the premier's county planning commission. They seemed interested in talking to me when I said I was on the planning mission, so that was, I don't know that they didn't want to actually spend time with us.
Power.
They didn't laugh at me.
And are you thinking, Rob, are you thinking about sort of those peer conversations, or are you talking about development? Okay.
Especially with Tyson's, and Mosaic's massive.
So you're thinking about what is our place in the region that Seven Corners is planning for redevelopment, Tyson's Corner, where's our place in the region?
And what does it mean to be locally serving, we're not gonna be regionally serving, we're not gonna be.
Right, right.
So I guess it's awareness, awareness of.
If I could sort of close the conversation on this topic here, or a sort of direct focus over here.
Yeah, I'm just trying to interpret a little bit, it sounds to me like what you might be saying is make sure that we're aware of what's going on around us as we make our decisions, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
What's realistic, you know.
It's related to affordable housing, it's related to transportation, it's related to most of the talk about.
Right, I think, because when you think about housing, that's really provided at a regional scale or a sub-market scale, not at the scale of two square miles. So what is the city's role in housing? What is our economic role? So who's gonna want to locate here for office uses? Who's gonna want to come and shop here when they have other options? So how does the city position itself, and what is the city facing?
Yeah, and I mean, we have Falls Church Housing Corp., but they seem to have gone dormant. And there's not a lot of stuff coming out of them right now.
Well, that's the Housing Commission. Falls Church, yeah, but they're working with the Housing Commission.
I know, but I'm just saying that they own property and things like.
Oh, I know.
And they should be trying to figure out how to, you know, parlay what they have into something more, too, would be helpful. Instead, they seem to be very stagnant right now.
Well, money, too. But, you know, just with the overarching thing that Rob was talking about, it's the same kind of thing I'm talking about within our own community of boards and commissions, and how we function as a local government. We don't know what the other guy's doing, and sometimes, you know, just step all over each other, which is terribly inefficient.
It goes back to the other thing that Rob said, that, you know, we have an issue again, things done, and part of it is that we have, the tree commission has a whole bunch of stuff they're talking about and want done, but they can't seem to get out of their tree commission world into where the action starts. And so, you'll have a tree commissioner come up to you and go like, "We want this to change for trees," and you're like, "Well, then we need you to get staff to draft the ordinance."
They just come and yell at him, because he doesn't want the rights.
Alright.
Yeah.
I took some pictures.
We got the topics, we're gonna talk about this for two weeks, so let's do that.
We're supposed to be done now, anyway.
Alright, well, I think we did really good. This is the first week we've done the approximate times on the agenda, and I gotta say, wrapping up at 10:35 on a 10:30 estimate is pretty close.
It's a A+.
Let's work on those times. I think we can do it in two hours, 30 minutes. It's working to be an efficient call.
I will get here on time next time, Matt, though.
Alright, perfect. This was exactly what I'm accomplishing, and we will have an agenda for everybody before the meeting, but it will generally be this, I mean, this is it.
With pepperoni pizza?
We can look at a nitrate pizza, yes.
We have a public, is it just the retreat, or is it a regular meeting after the retreat?
It's a public meeting, but I think we're trying to move all the action items and discussion items off.
There's nothing else.
Nothing else, that's, I'm not proving nothing else.
I think, if we do it like we did last time, we'll do the retreat, and then do a short public meeting where we're supposed to do one, right, like at 7:30, or?
We're in, what, March, so by charter, you guys have to have at least one meeting a month, you've already satisfied that.
Okay.
So you don't, and the retreat is also a public meeting. It doesn't specify what you have to do at your public meetings, it's just that you have to have one.
Isn't it a charter?
Yeah.
Really? What happens if we don't do it?
Then you violated the charter.
Then we're in trouble, because we've literally had meetings where we have planning commissioner reports, planning director reports, approved a minute, and we were done at 8:01.
You can have a meeting without a quorum. You can't take any actions.
I'm sure if you think hard enough, you're gonna come up with a way we could break that.
I'm gonna try, that's gonna bite all the commission.
Okay, adjourned.
We have a month with no meetings.
You and I will talk. Yes. Our normal time.
Oh, I thought I saw a good idea for me to get more social security.
Fairness planning commission takes a break, and all the others, they don't meet.
Really?